The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
The quorum is now open. The quorum is now open. Please use your e-device. The quorum is now open. Please log into your devices. Please log in your devices. If you need support, please raise your hand. If you need support, please raise your hand. Did you figure your password?
I'll bring it to you right now.
You did, I know it. I will now take a voice vote for those who have not used their e-device. And anyone that's virtual, I will come back for you. Alderwoman Dow. Alderwoman Dow is present. Alderman Robinson. Not present. Alderman Hall. Alderman Hall is present. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal is present. Alderwoman Ramirez. Not present. Alderman David Moore. Alderman Moore? Alderman Moore is present. Alderman Mosley. Alder Mosley is present. Alderwoman Cruz. Cruz not present. Alderman Conway. Conway not present. Alderman Villegas. Villegas is present. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is present. Alderwoman Silverstein. Silverstein is present. I'll go to those on ver- Alderman Cruz is attendance. Anyone else that I missed? Silverstein is present. And Cruz is present. Okay, all those that have voted who wished, the voting is now closed. The mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. There are forty-four members, forty-five members here present, so we do have a quorum. There are a few alders that wish to participate remotely per Rule fifty-nine. Apologies, that is permitted. So the following alders, Robinson, Julia Ramirez, Alderwoman Taylor, Alder Byron Sixchel Lopez, have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in Rule fifty-nine. Can I get a motion to approve their remote participation and have them have this been moved? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please add all those respective alders with the ability to participate remotely. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered today by Pastor Christian Kuhn from the Urban Village Church.
Let us pray. Oh God, we read in the Book of Exodus that you came to Moses in a flame of fire out of a bush. You encouraged him to take off his shoes, for he was on holy ground. Moses was a man in exile on the fringes in the wilderness, and yet all that was around him you declared to be holy ground. Today some go to the mountains or the oceans in the belief that only these grand vistas can we experience holy ground. But you are more than the mountains, more than the oceans. In fact, there is holy ground all around us in all kinds of unexpected places, including in our great city of Chicago. From Austin to Lake Michigan, from Rogers Park to Altgeld Gardens, we experience your sacred presence everywhere. Thank you for that presence. Help us to stop and rejoice in the diversity and richness of this city so that we might even take off our shoes and recognize the holy ground beneath the skyscrapers and in the cracked sidewalks. You have given us freedom and responsibility to care for this holy ground. I pray that your spirit would be here today in these chambers. May it come upon these leaders who have the awesome task of representing the millions of people who call this holy ground their home. Those residents who are descended from native tribes who have been here for eons and our migrant neighbors who have been here only a few weeks. Wherever they stand, sit, and lie down, you are there in those sacred spaces. May the decisions made here today honor each and every one of our citizens, especially the most vulnerable, so that when you appear to them, like you appeared to Moses, they may know your goodness and the love of their neighbors and the embrace of our city. Come, oh Spirit, into this space. Bring peace, kindness, and listening ears to this holy ground today. Amen.
Amen. May be seated. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend to briefly go out of the regular order of business to consider one item on my list of committee reports, and there's two on Alderman Ir-
No objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, Chairman Irvin and I request to defer and publish SL-2024-0007838 governing the issuance of general obligation and/or securitization corporation bonds for economic development or affordable housing programs.
Thank you very much. This item will be deferred. The chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman Vasquez and I wish to defer item number one and item number two of the Budget Committee report. Item number one is the annual appropriation ordinance here, 2024 amendment within Fund 925, ordinance 2024-0008345. And item number two, which is an ordinance amending the 2024 annual appropriation ordinance, which was a direct introduction from the Director of the Office of Budget and Management.
Thank you very much. Those items will be deferred. We will now return back to the regular order of business. Public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Any speaker, speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Our first speaker today is Patricia Tatum.
Good afternoon. My name is Patricia Tatum. I'm a resident of the 20th Ward, and I'm here to support the South Shore CBA ordinance, which includes housing protection for South Shore and the vacant lot on 63rd and Blackstone that's to be used for affordable housing. In 2020, the Woodline Housing Preservation Ordinance was passed. Some provisions that have been really helpful and useful in the community are the homeowner repair grants. Many of the long-term residents in Woodline are on fixed incomes, and they've lived here a long time but were unable to do the repairs needed for their homes. And I'm sure that it is the same problem that many people in South Shore are having right now, too. They need this money to get the repairs done so that they're not cited by the city or fear of losing their home. We need these grants, and we need transparency around where the grant money is going. Ever since the Obama Center was announced in 2015, I've been receiving regular calls, emails, text messages from investors who want to buy my property, which I've been in for over forty years now. I've lived and worked in this community for over fifty years as a nurse. There should be some more support systems in place for long-term homeowners and tenants. It is not right that we are second priority to investors and people looking to just make money and not be a part of this community. There are a lot of folks who've been displaced from Woodline, whose rents have gone up because of investors who jack up the prices and make people unable to afford to live in the community anymore. This has also led to a lot of people doubling up in someone else's home or moving to other places such as South Shore. This has been a traumatic experience for this community. A lot of times, we have two to three generations living in one home, and displacement and gentrification means the new units that are being built have only been built suitable for occupancy by one to two people. We need to stop this cycle of instability and displacement by passing the South Shore CBA ordinance. In the closing, I want to point out that in the last election, there was a referendum in two precincts of Seventh Ward where over seventy-seven percent of the residents voted yes for South Shore CBA. What I'm telling you today is sold by many people in South Shore, so I urge you to support the South Shore CBA ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Michael Young Bay.
This is seventy million dollars. Seventy million dollars. And I count the past millions of dollars that this city done approved of, or this state and the county, et cetera. Seventy million dollars. Y'all won't even put a million dollars in one neighborhood. A million dollars in one neighborhood. Brandon Mayor Johnson, you say that you for the children, et cetera, you for the youth, you know, you want to have work programs for the youth, et cetera. Where a million dollars for these work programs, for these children? See, I'm not going to address nobody in the room no more. I'm gonna just address you whenever this is city council. Because I gave you a hard drive of what me and my family has experienced far as the discrimination against these, against me and my child and my wife. You know, that come from places like the Safer Foundation. That come from all Chicago. That come from Bring Chicago Home. You see, that come from these ministers that y'all have. You know, if you go look on Bring Chicago Home site, you see all the reverence and things like that. They got all these nice churches in these neighborhoods. Nice mega churches. And our people homes. And I don't even want to say our people homes, because some people, we gotta be honest, they do let their stuff go. They do live up in trash, et cetera. But, and willingly of their own will. But what about the faith? Right, what about Seventy-Ninth Street? You see what I'm saying? What about the faith? What about Seventy-first Street? What about all these different streets with these abandoned buildings? With these empty lots? And then the churches come up and try to buy these lots? That's why I say to the people, "Come up out of her. Come up out of Rome." That's why I say that, "Come up out of there. The snake is no good. It don't matter who they put at the head. He ain't running nothing. We gotta be honest about this situation." But I'm still gonna talk to you. I'm still gonna call you out. I'm still gonna say the names. And then I'm coming down here fighting about me and my family housing and being discriminated and retaliated against, and I get attacked by Greg Mitchell. But, you know, and I still been trying to come here, be humble and things like that, and things, and give honors and respect and things like that, but y'all ain't trying to hear that. So now I'm gonna go press these charges, and I'm gonna do this lawsuit. I'm not finna play with y'all, I told y'all. And I got proof. I got evidence. I got the video of me having to use a hard drive, et cetera. You know what I'm saying? So I'm Michael Young Bay to the media.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Kirby Callen.
Hello, and thank you for taking my public comment. My name is Kirby Callen, and I am an organizer in the Thirty-second Ward, where I focus on expanding public access to mental health care, housing, and public safety. I'd like to start my comment by addressing the Godzilla in the room, and by that, I of course mean affordable housing. The Finance Committee endorsed the proposal for 1.25 billion for affordable housing over the next five years. So much of life as a Chicagoan these days is defined by the transient nature of constantly moving every year or two because you can no longer live in the community you want to place roots. And so we need to build affordable housing. Let's borrow money, let's cut some tape, and build more affordable housing units across this city with speed and safety. I also want to address the substitute order to change the future of ShotSpotter to a ward-by-ward basis. We cannot do this. We need to cancel the ShotSpotter contract and discontinue its use, discontinue its use citywide. An altermanic discretion of ShotSpotter would lead to a patchwork across the city of profiling, oppression, and aggression. If we are truly to believe that policing can fight crime, we don't need to be expending their resources on something that leads to eighty-five percent of the time to incidents where there's no evidence of a gun crime, ninety percent of the time with no evidence of a crime at all. ShotSpotter wastes our resources and puts those that are most vulnerable at risk of being profiled and damaged by our police. And I also want to spend time speaking on the migrant funding. This is a crisis across our city, but it is not because of the immigrants, it is because our lack of allocation of resources. This migrant crisis is a resource crisis, and we need vast resources to protect our new community members. Seventy million, seventy million- Hey, you can fight as much as you want, but it's true. These are our neighbors. These are now a part of our communities. Immigrants are a basis for our future as a city. Ever since the beginning to now, immigrants are the lifeblood of this city, and we need to support them. Not just in the seventy millimeter, but to address the future of this city. We need investments in affordable housing, public access to mental health care, so that these people are protected and ensured that they can live in Chicago in a community that is vibrant, depending not only them, but the connections within the community. Seventy millimeter, excuse me, seventy million dollars is a great way to start, but it's not enough. It's possible for us to not spend enough on migrant funding? It is not possible for us to spend too, excuse me, it's not possible for us to spend too much. We're spending too little. Let's expand the money for migrants. They need our support. They're not going anywhere. We are a welcoming city, we're gonna stay that way, so let's make sure they are protected. Thank you. That's my public comments. Whoa. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Richard Posso.
Before our next speaker, before our next speaker, just a second, sir. Before our next speaker, I would respectfully ask yet again that those that are participating in democracy allow our speakers to finish their presentation. If you cannot adhere to that expectation, I'm going to ask that our Sergeant-at-Arms remove you. Give our speakers the respect that they deserve, their three minutes. You may commence, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody here. My name is Richard, last name is Posso. I'm a store manager at a automotive facility here in Chicago. I'm a native to Chicago. It's near and dear to my heart. The city doesn't feel the same anymore. There's a lot of stuff going on right now that's really hard to process. There's a lot of people here that have watched me on social media. I'm a social media influencer, and I've heard the word getting back to me. Some of the people that work for you have gotten stuff back to me. I'm gonna say what I have to say regardless. You can come after me if you want, you can try to slander me if you want. Some of the aldermen can talk behind my back if you want, but there's thirty-one out of fifty aldermen, December fourteenth, that turned their back on the public, that said, "I will not take their vote on this city continuing to be a sanctuary city." You turned it to yourself to speak for us. You turned it to yourself to speak for the public. We pay you, you work for us. We put you there. How can you stand there and say anything about, "We don't want to take their vote"? We're gonna speak on their behalf, and this is how it's gonna be. It shouldn't work that way. Any politician that feels like they deserve that type of control over people, they don't deserve to be politicians. They don't deserve to be in the spot that they're in. Second of all, I'm a veteran. I served fifteen months in a war zone for this country where I got hurt. Yes, the VA does take care of me. But every year, I'm hearing, "Let's take away, let's take away, let's take away, let's give back, let's take away, let's give back." But we have immigrants that serve with us, that put their life on the line, that are still fighting for citizenship, that are in the military, that deserve all the respect in the world, and they don't get it. They come back, they're still fighting for citizenship, some of them don't get it, they get deported. These are people that put their life on the line for this country, for all of you to have the freedom and the jobs that you have, and they don't get the respect to have somebody care for them and help them through the process. But all of you guys out here will vote for people that are complete aliens to this country that have nothing. Trin de Agua, Venezuela, anything coming from the Dominican, not Honduras, all these people are coming here, they've cleared out these prisons years ago, and they're sending all these people here. They don't want them there. They don't serve them a purpose. They're showing up here in New York, in Chicago, attacking people in the streets. The police are fighting with them in the shelters that you guys are funding. You guys think it's a great idea, but yet your police officers are getting attacked. Your public's getting attacked. You're putting our lives at risk by doing what you're doing, and none of you care about it because the mighty dollar sits on top. And as long as somebody's in your pocket that you're working with, you're okay with doing it. You don't care about the citizens. At some point in time, there's gonna be an answering for this. What it is, I don't know. But it doesn't look good. And I don't respect most of the people that are in here because you turned your back on the citizens and you said, "Your voice doesn't matter."
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Tuan Sims.
The homeless, what is it, the HMIS, the homeless management information systems? So my number would have been 355061. That would have been issued July fifteenth, 2021. We financed that endeavor, right? The HMIS, that's financed and budgeted, right? Because this is what we're here to talk about. We're here to talk about finance and budget. However, I'm an individual in the room. One individual. Y'all mismanaging this, failing actually. Because once again, July fifteenth, 2021, it's July, what is it now, what? Anybody, April seventeenth. I didn't sleep last night worrying about this. I didn't sleep last night imagining, how do you talk to these people to have them understand that, hey, this is difficult to deal with, especially when you're a forty-three-year-old resident of the city of Chicago versus being somebody who just got here, who being treated just like you should be treated? Right? I'm just saying. So yesterday was my son's birthday. If I had housing, we could have spent it pleasantly. I didn't speak to him. I didn't speak to him. His name, Ian Walto Bissims. I actually have an order of protection, his mom got it. My son is a star pupil and a star athlete in Evanston High School, however, his father supported him to the utmost, and yet I'm attacked over this. I'm attacked maybe because of my views and the fact that, to point out that our government, our city government, now that I understand, has basically turned their back on black Chicagoans. Y'all are implementing our demise here in the city through financing and budgeting. I sit in the room and actually get the understanding now. And it's disgusting. The hardship that I'm suffering and been suffering, it seem like it's not only unintentional, it seem like it's manufactured. Like I've been pursued for the last four years simply for my views or simply for pointing out the fact that I'm not getting nowhere. We talk about, "Let's repair it." But you finna put seventy million into this mission. Six hundred million in Illinois alone, two hundred and seventy-five million more. This year counted one hundred and fifty million. My HMIS number is 355061. How did y'all drop the ball for so many years on one individual? But y'all coming to budget and finance, y'all coming to budget and finance the demise of black Chicagoans here. That's what y'all budgeting and financing. Y'all whittling us out, and y'all doing it in such a gracious fashion. Y'all representing us as y'all do it. This what y'all doing.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Prey Islay.
Good afternoon to the city of Chicago. I am Prey of the Thirty-seventh Ward. Chicago Red is our organization. Because we started this session with a prayer, I want to start my comment with a scripture. First Timothy five and eight says, "But if any provide not for his own, and specifically for those of his own house, he hath denied the face and is worse than an infidel." So I want to talk to y'all today about not going to hell. In the Thirty-seventh Ward, there was a family, the Jones family. Amarié Jones was standing in her family building that they've owned for forty years doing a TikTok dance with her mother. A bullet came through the window, hit her in the neck, she fell to the ground in front of her mother and bled to death. A month ago, on the Chicago mugshot page, her mother was on that page. Her mother had on her daughter's Rest in Peace t-shirt, she washed it so many times that it was completely faded out. She was completely high, out of her mind, and the charge was possession. Now, the first fifty-one million dollars that this council gave to the migrants came from the opioid settlement fund. I am here on behalf of the Jones family, on behalf of the Thirty-seventh Ward, on behalf of black Chicago, on behalf of the entire city, to ask you all to vote no and put that money back in the opioid settlement fund. We need that money in my neighborhood. We need that on my block. That woman should not be at Cook County Jail because she's grieving over a random act of violence that caused her to lose her child in front of her face when the city of Chicago has millions upon, millions upon, millions of dollars to give to people who ain't paid a dime to the tax base. We've been in my building for fifty-two years, we about to pay some more taxes. The Jones family has been in their building for forty-five years, paying taxes every year on time. So I'm asking y'all to use our tax money for our people. We need it. We got people leaning, we got people rocking, we got overdosing, we got pass-out lines. You live on the west side, Mayor Johnson, you know exactly what I'm talking about. We need the money for us. We need opioid treatment on the west side of Chicago. We are the headquarters of the cartel, and everybody in here knows it. They selling more drugs than the law can allow, and y'all giving money back to them because they traffic those people up here, so we paying them going and coming. Absolutely not. We pay too much. It costs too much money to live in this city. Help Wanda Jones. Help every other grieving mother who feels like she has to go get high to get over the loss of her child. This is a woman who lived in that house, she still sleeps in that living room where her daughter passed out and bled to death. So I'm asking y'all to say no, put these people on the back burner, and put the money back in the opioid fund. We need that money. Thank y'all.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Islay. The next speaker is Mr. Denzel Dillard. The next speaker is Mr. Denzel Dillard.
Yes, how you doing there, Mayor?
Good afternoon.
I come here for a different perspective. I come here to give you praise. I hope to soften the blow here. I think I've been sent here, you know, after being evicted, after all the turmoil that I'm going through. I'm here to say thank you. I think you're doing a great job, you know, despite the disparities that's going on within our communities. You know, shucks, I don't care what mayor was here, it wouldn't be done. But more importantly, I'm here to, to let you know that I'm struggling, young man. I've always, at your tenure, wanted to work for your administration. You know, my goal is to get hired. I believe in your mission, I believe in the hope of the city. I believe in your, your mission, I believe in, in, in the hope of the city. Um, and then I see where your administration is going. I want to be a part of the process, even if I do not work for your administration or hope to, um, be hired for some job, um, for the city. And one of the reasons that I thank the Lord that I'm here, because a lot of people don't think that I'll be hired. They think that I won't be helped by you, they think that, um, things can't happen, you know, to good people. I believe in you, I believe. And my goal is hopefully to work for your administration or for the city, and hopefully to even soften the blow. Because I, I see so much here, I almost want to pray for this environment. Because I do not let anyone steer me wrong, just like you do. You know, no matter with the bickering and the hollering, because I adore and I appreciate this whole administration, this whole body here, even the people, even that's behind me. I, okay, kiss it. And, and just like this, I want to be, um, an asset to your, to the city and to your administration, or to some part, um, working inside the administration. I just want to thank you, and I just want to say this very briefly. Lord, I want to thank you for this moment that you gave us. Lord, I want you to, to, to continue to bless our city. Lord, bless the people that surround us, Lord. Give them what they need, Lord, calm their spirit, Lord. You've been ever so gracious, Lord. I want to thank you for what you're doing, for what you've done, and I think that's going to be down and restored over our lives, and this city will be greater with our help and assistance. I thank you in Jesus's name, amen. Love you, Mayor.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Dillard. The next speaker is Ms. Jessica Jackson.
So Christmas is coming early this year. We gonna check that list when it go up on that wall for voting, and we gonna check it twice. And we gonna find out who's been naughty and nice, based on how y'all vote. And we gonna start it off with Maria Hadden, yeah.
Chicago and some communities so angry. Why, why is all this kind of anti-immigrant sentiment coming up? And I want to explain to folks, it's because if we cared as much about black people and had over the decades as we do about everyone else, we wouldn't be here.
But the money from a twenty-two... All right. That would be Maria Hadden. Stepping out there, I see you, don't get sarcastic, because we can get jiggy, right? You set up here for that first fifty-one million, talking about how you feel about black people, and how you have to have the same energy for black people, and you ain't never stood on this floor, talking about money for black people. You get on this floor and talk about black and brown, because you somewhere in the middle with it, right? But I tell you this, and I'm telling every other black alderman in here today, you vote for the money for these immigrants today, and we coming for them seats. You can believe that. You gonna stop pimping the black people's plight to get brown people, as y'all call it, money. You gonna give us our press conference up there on the third floor, keep talking to the mayor's boy with the clink, clink from his pass. That's why he gotta do what the mayor say do. Him and a lot of other ones sitting here with these shady passes. That's why you gotta vote the way that you vote. But all of us ain't got shady passes. Some of us free out here, and we can vote how we want to vote, and we coming for those seats. Now, to align yourself with somebody who's obviously a one-term mayor, if he even makes it that far, you better be worrying about your job. You better be worrying about your longevity. Because we gonna vote, and we gonna get you out, because you ain't doing right by us. That's what time it is. And for your law person that's next to you, I'm gonna need you to check out that federal charge that I got against those public administrators over there for messing with black people's property. It's federal case number two-three-CB-one-four-five-nine-zero. All right? And this, and on, 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 on that note, on that note, if y'all don't give us our money for the black community, notice, we getting ready to file a federal injunction against City Hall for benign neglect to the south side and west side. You got that? Boom.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Jackson. The next speaker is Ms. Sarah Thomas-Lena.
Hello, my name is Sarah Tomas-Lemna, and I'm a community organizer with Asian Americans Advancing Justice Chicago, and I live in the fifth ward. I'm calling on city council to approve seventy million dollars in funding to support new arrivals until the end of the year. Asian Americans Advancing Justice Chicago has been working on mutual aid with new arrivals across the city for over a year now. In addition, we have been part of the Bring Chicago Home campaign and Stop Shot Spotter Coalition, as well as have advocated for long-term solutions like treatment, not trauma. The common thread in what you have heard today is our anger in a broken system that we must reimagine together. It's the system that maintain generational disinvestment in communities of color across Chicago, and this is what prevents our city, one of the richest cities in the world, from paying a little bit more into the public safety net system while schools and mental health clinics shut down in our communities. Food prices, rent, and childcare costs rise, and thousands of our neighbors continue to sleep on the streets. The common thread here is systemic racism, and these disinvestments have kept communities of color down for generations. This systemic racism has also blocked any positive action on immigration from Congress for almost forty years. Immigrants are simply not a priority in the federal system. And so I want to speak today to urge you to vote on Friday for seventy million dollars, um, from, which will be, uh, pulled from city reserves, um, not from any sort of funding to support individuals impacted by the opioid epidemic. In addition into those, in addition to those seventy million dollars, we also need to start thinking about long-term solutions to fund affordable housing and economic development that will benefit all Chicagoans. So on Friday, this council will have that opportunity, and I urge you to vote yes to borrow one point two-five million dollars over the next five years and to make economic security a reality for more of our neighbors. In addition, I would like to urge council to vote against the order that calls for alders to be able to choose whether to remove shot spotter technology on a ward-by-ward basis, and also calls for any decisions related to violence prevention funding to be brought to the Public Safety Committee and to a full city council vote. We reject the intention and the outcomes of this order and support Mayor Brandon Johnson's decision to cancel the contract with Shot Spotter citywide. Chicago has long been a welcoming city, and we are committed to ensuring that it remains that way. We are facing a challenging moment, but it's nothing we haven't faced before. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Thomas-Lena. The next speaker is Mr. George Blake Moore.
The problem is racism. I guess you can hear me. The problem is racism. This is worse than communist China. All these people sitting here, they're a member of one party, the Democratic machine. These black ones do not have our interests. They work for the master. These big-headed white men run this system. Man, you can't, they run it. And I, I was looking around, I said, "Well, how many white women do they have here?" You know, doing, uh, uh, suffrage. The white woman didn't like that, because she couldn't vote, and she was like a subject to a, a big-headed white man. So looking here, I don't see many white women here. Uh-uh, uh, one or two. So the problem here in Chicago is racism, nepotism, corruption, a one-party system. These big-headed white men run this. This big-headed man doesn't run this. But these black aldermen, they don't have no power. Who slays them? Corporate America. Who runs Corporate America? These big-headed white men. Now, you can be in denial, now look at you, over there passing, right here. Look at that while I'm talking. Young lady, young lady, sit down. Sit down, tell her to sit down. Tell her. Tell her to sit down. So wait a minute, you, you don't like this? I'm gonna tell you, I'm educating you, I'm informing you, I'm enlightening you. These big-headed white people that enslaved us, brought us here. Now they're giving money to another people. Are they nappy, hell, big nose, stick lips, and a black booty hole like mine? No, no they not. And they giving millions and millions of dollars to them. Can't you see how arrogant she is when I told her to be seated? She's gonna stand up and go, "You work for us."
Mr. Blake Moore, please stay in the microphone so we can hear you, sir. Thank you.
Something is mighty wrong here, sir. We are still on the white man's plantation, and I urge black people to be selfish. A selfish people, self-preservation is the first law of nature. Focus on you. They're giving millions, they're, they're showing you better than they can tell you. They're showing you by giving, they're not giving no money to them, these big-headed white men. We're still on the plantation.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Blake Moore. Your time has expired. Your Honor, there are no further speakers for public comments.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Blake Moore, thank you. I need you all to stop shouting. This is now your second warning. I'm doing my best to remain patient. We appreciate you participating in democracy, but I would ask that you also display some decorum. Thank you. All right, resolutions. Before we move forward with our resolutions, the chair recognizes Alderman Lee, who wishes to make an acknowledgement. Alderman Lee.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I move for the temporary suspension of the rules so that I may acknowledge, um, and recognize Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, sir. I, I want to rise in honor today of Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month and the profound contributions of the Sikh American community to our city. And I'd like to acknowledge our guests in the chamber today for attending the meeting, uh, despite the little schedule changing that we've got here. So if I may ask them to stand, uh, we have Mr. Rajinder Singh Mago, Sarwan Singh Raju, Shiva Singh Kalsa, Sarwan Singh Raju, Navnik Cor Basin, Balwinder Singh Gurn. April holds a special significance for our Sikh neighbors as it marks the birth month of the Guru Nanak Devji, founder of Sikhism, and the establishment of the Kalsa Order. These events epitomize Sikh values of truth, service, and equality, values that we must uphold as a city. For over a century, Sikh Americans have played a vital role in Chicago's growth and prosperity. Despite being the fifth-largest religious community in the world, with approximately twenty-five thousand Sikhs residing in the greater Chicago community alone, Sikhs continue to be among one of the population's most vulnerable to hate crimes. According to the most recent FBI report on hate crimes, Sikhs still remain the second-most targeted group in the nation for religiously motivated hate crimes. And it's our collective duty to stand against all forms of discrimination, echoing Sikh founding principles of egalitarianism and respect for all. And by officially recognizing April as Sikh Awareness, excuse me, Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month, we reaffirm our commitment to fostering religious diversity, tolerance, and understanding in our city. And I extend my deepest gratitude to the Sikh American community for both their tireless efforts in shaping the city and their tireless insistence that we can and should do better by one another. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Please, thank you for being here today. Thank you for that recognition. Alderman Robinson has also asked that we take a moment for another acknowledgement. The chair recognizes Alderman Lamont Robinson.
Mayor, thank you very much. As part of this legislative body, it's an honor to introduce a resolution commending the Chicago Bar Association. This organization has been a leading advocate for changes to significant parts of Illinois law, including participation in two constitutional conventions, one in nineteen-twenty and the other in nineteen-sixty-nine, and a passage of Illinois Constitution in nineteen-seventy. The Chicago Bar Association, since its inception, has been dedicated to serving vulnerable populations. This association has made waves of changes throughout its history. It was a main proponent of establishing a juvenile court, protecting millions of our children from being lost in the adult penitentiary system. Currently, the CBA is operating numerous programs that benefit the public, including the law, excuse me, including Law at the Library, Call a Lawyer, and Lawyers in the Classroom, all of which serve residents of Chicago and provide legal resources for free. I would like to again congratulate the Chicago Bar Association on its one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, and thank you for your contributions in molding our legal system for, for the betterment of the citizens of the city of Chicago. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Robinson. Thank you. Congratulations, one-hundred-and-fifty years. Thank you for being here. I believe the rules have already been suspended, um, but for just the, for the exercise. Um, and I appreciate both Alders, Lee, and Robinson, uh, for those recognitions. So now we have a couple of resolutions commemorating the life and the legacy of Cook County Clerk Karen Yarborough. We are celebrating Arab American Heritage Month, and we are honoring the Lesbian Visibility Week. Alderman Mitchell?
Mr. President, I move for the temporary suspension for the, for, of the rules for the immediate consideration of these resolutions.
Thank you very much. Hearing no objections, so ordered. In the interest of time, we will forego the reading of these resolutions, and we will go straight to city council members who wish to make remarks regarding these resolutions. Our first resolution, again, is commemorating the life and the legacy of Cook County Clerk Karen Yarborough. Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's with a very heavy heart we stand here today, uh, memorializing a giant of our community. While she did not live in the city of Chicago, she was very influential uh, to everything that happened here. We sat on the executive committee of the Cook County Democratic Party together, and I got to learn upfront and personal what a force Karen Yarborough was. There wasn't a day that went by in our proceedings where she didn't fight for her community, but fight for equity and justice for all as well. Her loss, your loss, is all of our loss, and I very humbly stand before you and rise to say that our society, our county, is so much better off for having our clerk, Yarborough, serve our community for such a long time. Thank you for sharing her with us and our love, our respect to you, Mr. Yarborough, and the rest of the Yarborough family. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank, recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, um, Mr. President. Uh, I wish we would have just taken the time personally to read that resolution. I know it's time sake, but she was more than worth that time, because I haven't gotten a copy of that resolution. But I, I will say this personally for me. Over the past, like, fifteen to sixteen years that I've known Clerk Yarborough, uh, we mainly just saw each other at events, hugged each other, talked, and loved on one another. And it was more through her cool husband Henderson, who I, the mayor, the former mayor Henderson, that I would see and just like, man, the way you loved on that woman was just... just, just something to behold, a man to see in terms of the way you all loved on one another. And that's the epitome and excellence of black love. But it was the end of February, the middle of February to the end of March, that we spoke on the phone almost every day over the last 15 years. We never talked like that. Henderson had that because we didn't care. We just didn't. We just more or less, when we saw each other. But from the mid-February to March 20th, which is the last day I spoke with her, she was still, we had no idea, just no idea, because what she was doing was laying the foundation, talking about the work that needs to be done in our communities. And when I think of Clerk Yarborough, I think of that name Karen, kind. And for the first time, we sometimes use that name, the word kind interchangeably with nice. They are two very different words. When you're kind, you're willing to make waves when something isn't right, especially when people are being mistreated. When you're kind, you're most concerned with doing what is right and willing to speak up and take a stand. Nice people never want to rock the boat. Clerk Yarborough rocked it, and she did it with tact and class. And so, her name itself, if you look it up, means pure, which points out to the wonderful innocence of childhood and the loving, pure nature a baby embodies. That was her spirit. Because she lived up to her name, and because I know unequivocally she had a personal issue with God, she is resting in purity. To this family, to all of her friends, to the staff at the county, the clerk's office, you all are in our prayers, not only today, but continuously. And for me personally, whether Henderson, whether it's picking up a broom, whatever I need, I've told you that, big or small, I'm here and I'm going to be checking in on you. God bless you, and I will keep you all in prayer. And thank God, thank you so much, her family, for sharing her with us. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Derek Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise for this resolution. I want to give my condolences to the family I've known Karen for, oh my God, almost 30 years. She's always been a person with integrity. She, she joke around a lot, but she was serious. She was really, really serious about the changes that she wanted to make, not only in her community, but for the entire county and the state. Her life has been, has been really awesome. I know I call her a lot of times for advice, but she will always answer. And if she didn't, if she didn't answer, she would definitely always give a person a call back. So, again, with heavy hearts, you know, earth has no sorrow, of course, the heaven can heal. So, we standing here with you and the family. Thank you so very much for lending her to us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak? Chair recognizes Alderwoman Pat Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. And unto the family and friends of Cook County Clerk Karen Yarborough, on behalf of the residents of the Third Ward, we extend our sympathies and heartfelt sympathies to you on your loss. I didn't know Karen for a very long time. I did serve with her as a member of the Cook County Democratic Party when I joined the executive board for a very short time. She was someone that I looked to because I really didn't know what I was doing. And she was kind and thoughtful, strong and assertive, and I appreciated that about her. I admired that about her. She was also an encourager, somebody who would give you some sense of how you should be moving, how you should be thinking about the world of politics, and I appreciated that. I also want to say that when she gave you her word, she backed it up with action. She just wasn't a mouthpiece. She was sincere about her support. When she gave it, she meant it, and I truly appreciated that. Her loss is a great loss to the city of Chicago and to Cook County, and her memory will not be forgotten. And again, my sympathy to you all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Alderman, Alderman, the chair recognizes Alderman Ray Lopez.
Good morning and thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council, and to the Yarborough family. My colleagues and I join you today, but I would be remiss if I did not also stand up and sing the praises of Karen. I first met her 12 years ago when I was elected Democratic committeeman. And as we've heard, she was, you know, we know she was kind, we know she was loving, but she was a great mentor to everyone that was willing to listen. And I believe that more leaders like her are necessary. Her spirit lives on in all who knew her, not just in her, not just in this room, but through all of you. All of you who had the pleasure of living with her and seeing all parts of her personality, all parts of her spirit. And as someone who could always count on the truth coming from her lips to my ears and being able to receive it for well over a decade, I like to think that she helped mold me into a better elected official than if I had just arrived on the scene being crazy Raymond Lopez. Her words never fell on deaf ears when they came to me, and that smile was infectious. And for whatever it's worth, she could teach you how to hug a porcupine and still love every minute of it. And that is a rarity in politics. It's a rarity in leadership for someone to be able to be welcoming to all without being divisive, even when you disagree. So thank you for making the time to be here, for allowing us to not only share in this moment, but share in a lifetime that has meant so much to so many. And to you, Mr. President, thank you for giving the opportunity to this body to join in with you to make this sentiment known. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the Yarborough family, to Mr. Henderson, I'll never forget, before I was elected Alderman, we went over to Broadview Baptist Church, and after church, we went to McArthur's. And I think it was Governor Prisker's first time having some baked chicken and dressing and macaroni together. And I will never forget having lunch with you all and talking about your love story and the amazing work, not only improviso, but the impact that your family has had on the West Side and in Chicago. To Legacy, to Cedric. I don't know how you all did it with Clerk Yarborough when the Recorder of Deeds office was phased out and having to run a primary, a general, and then having to rerun less than two years later. It's so good to see you Pastor Brooks and First Lady Brooks and seeing the support for this amazing family and Judge Travis. Clerk Yarborough was one of the first women to welcome me into Alpha Kappa Alpha. She was one of the first women that I called in the African-American women here of the city council. We have, we'll be filing our resolution in addressing violence against black women here in Chicago. It was Clerk Yarborough who gave me some courage to address some things happening in the Cook County Democratic Party when I was a little afraid to, and she gave me that extra oomph and that wisdom to expose some things, and it worked out in our benefit in our community. To Henderson, Mr. Henderson, to the entire family, to the entire clerk's office, thank you for being her grace and mercy, having her back, being that support, Officer Curry, and sharing her with us in Cook County. An amazing woman, an ivy on the wall, and we are so grateful for her life and her service of 24 years here in Cook County and the city of Chicago. God bless you all, and my prayers and blessings are with you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Are there any other Alders wish to speak to this resolution? Okay, see any other hands for the final speaker will be Alderman Jason Irvin. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
I met Karen 25 years ago. At the time, I had no idea what impact she would have on me. She literally just walked up to me and said, "I need you to come out to Maywood to help me." Back then, we tallied up election results on paper, and you didn't have the computers and all of that stuff that we have today. And she asked me to come out and help her with, at the time Henderson was running for trustee out in Maywood. Just weird, you know, just walked up, "Hey, come do this." And that began one of the most phenomenal relationships that I've ever had. Karen was like a mother to me. She hugged us when we needed to be hugged. She chastised us when we needed that too. And people talk about, and I was talking to the family earlier about this kind Karen. And I don't know that kind Karen, because Karen was always tough on us because she demanded and expected excellence. She demanded and expected us to do what we were capable to do and what we should be doing. And she taught me about what I call a pragmatic progressivism and was laser-focused on everything that she wanted us to accomplish. And not only did she work, tell us what to do, she worked beside us in doing it. She always told us that we can always be better and strived for us to do that. Even in my last conversation with her, it was about an issue around housing and about, "Didn't I tell you to do A, B, and C?" I said, "Yes, we'll get it done." "You don't have time." "You think you have time, but you don't. Get it done." I said, "Yes." The same conversation she talked about retirement. It's like, wow, that's a different one. Unfortunately, we didn't get a chance to finish that conversation. God finished it for us. I love you.
Thank you, Alderman. This entire body, this council, we love you, the Yarborough family. You know, her career as a public servant, the state rep, Court of Deeds, and county clerk, she was a barrier breaker. You know, it's a lot when you have a first black, it's different when you have a first black woman. So I happen to believe that first black woman is the creation of humankind. And throughout her time as a public servant, Karen has passed some of the most remarkable legislation to improve the lives of so many people. Karen fought for social justice, women's rights, accessible health care, fair housing. Her efforts are recognized around the globe. The beauty of her leadership, it's not just defined by how long her legacy will last, because it will last forever. The beauty of Karen is that her love endures, and it certainly endures through you, Henderson Yarborough, to her family, friends, to her faith community. Her indelible contributions will be remembered for generations to come. And the entire city of Chicago, though we mourn and we grieve, and you have our condolences, know that the people of Chicago are proud to have served alongside of one of the greatest persons to serve in her capacity. So with that, Alderman Mitchell, I'd like for you to offer up a request here.
I request that we pass this resolution by rising vote.
Members, please rise. So as we prepare, just want to give a shout out to a few folks. Thank you again to Mr. Yarborough, Vicky, Tammy, Antonio, Carmen, Sarah, Denise, Cheryl, Victor, Makyla, Christopher, Deandre, Curtis, Keith, her pastor, Darius, Brooks, Tim Curry. Thank you all again. We love you. God bless you. Our next resolution is for Arab American Heritage Month. As our guests arrive, are there any Alders that wish to speak to this resolution honoring Arab American Heritage Month? All right, the chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. It is genuinely an honor to stand in recognition and support of this resolution for all of those in the box who serve in our communities, who start businesses in our communities, who make beautiful poetry and music and life in our communities. I am going to take a moment and be grateful for my mother, who from an early age tuned us into the poetry and the writing of Khalil de Bruin. From an early age was bringing Arab-American art into our lives as a family. I will say, I am really proud that I serve in an incredibly diverse body. I hope that I serve long enough to serve with an Arab-American alderperson. I am so grateful to serve with folks in the mayor's administration, like Rawaida Zatar. I hope that I serve long enough to see deeper and more comprehensive Arab-American representation in that office as well. There's so much talent. There's so much professional talent and passion and giving in the Arab-American community. I hope, and I hope you will hold us accountable, to see more representation of your community in this august body, in this room, not just the many wonderful faces in this box. Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to be associated with this resolution as well during Arab American Heritage Month. And it was just a couple of years ago that this body took a step in putting forward a resolution that identified the Mina community. And took a look at incorporating it into the way that we identify with hiring, procurement, and put forward a disparity study, which is still being worked on. We were the first city in the country to put forward such a resolution that has now garnered some support at the federal level. And so hopefully, in the next census, you will now see forward a new category that states Mina. So that way, your community could be identified instead of being identified in a subcategory that you don't recognize with. So I just wanted to congratulate the Arab American community and be associated with the resolution.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, I joyfully rise to support this resolution. Many friends in the box there. And it's not lost upon me that particularly Latino culture is so influenced by Arab culture. I think about, one of my favorite vacations was visiting La Jamba in Granada and understanding that many Spanish words derive from the Arab language. It speaks to the fact that not only do we live together in community, not only do we eat together at tables, but our very essence as communities is tied together. And we are greater when we are one. So today, I stand to say I am one with my brothers and sisters in the Arab American community. And it's an absolute pleasure to be in such relationship with all of you today and every day. And I got to give a special shout out to a good friend of mine, State Representative Albinasa Rashid, who I enjoyed knocking on doors for him over the last couple of elections. He's a very good friend. And has taught me so much about being a leader and an ally in so many of the issues that we tackle day in and day out in our lives. So thank you so mu- very much for presenting yourselves today and every day as such leaders, not just in the Arab American community, but in our great city of Chicago. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Maria Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. It was nice to get to meet a few folks in the, in the holding room. And again, I'm just pleased so many people were able to make it with the rescheduling pieces. Representing the 49th Ward in Rogers Park, one of our most diverse wards in the city, I just want to stand up, celebrate this month with you. Our community celebrates with you. Thank you for making Chicago the great city that it is.
Thank you, Alder. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Deborah Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in support of this resolution. I know Alderwoman Haddon said her ward was the most diverse ward in the city of Chicago, but I beg to differ. Because I say that the 50th Ward is the most diverse ward in the city of Chicago with a very large South Asian community. And what I say when I talk about my ward and how much I love it and the diversity is that all of us get along. And if the rest of the world could see how we get along and respect one another, we would all be in a better place. So I just wanted to stand in support of this resolution. Congratulations.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Desmond Yancy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I, um, 2019, I had the honor and pleasure of being hired as a senior director of organizing and advocacy at Inner City Muslim Action Network. And it was at that time I came in contact with Fatima, who was over at Sinead, which is a social service organization in Chicago Lawn. And shortly after that, I became working, began working closely with her daughter, Abir, who was on my staff as an organizer, working in Inglewood and Chicago Lawn as we fought for police accountability, food justice, and a number of different things. What's important about this is, um, the concept of social service in Islam talks about rendering service to mankind in order that your creator should be pleased with you. And that that service to creators, creatures, rather, should be all encompassing, universal, and should preferably, preferably be regulated not on an individual but a collective basis. And it was in my time working at Eman with black Muslims, largely formerly incarcerated people, and Arab Americans who were migrated to this country. Seeing people come together in order to build something special in Inglewood is really important to me. And so to have had allies support my work, I'm here to support theirs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. When I was first appointed, the first, the first remarks I ever gave were for Arab American Heritage Month. So it's got a special place in my heart. And I think that we share so much in common between Asian Americans and Arab Americans in our experience and how unique that is to honor our ancestral roots while building lives here in America. And for us in the Asian American community, I tell this story every year, so if you bear with me a second, there's, I learned that there was a term used to describe American-born Chinese. I didn't realize what this was and didn't know what it meant until I was a teenager. And the term is jok sing. And that literally means hollow bamboo. That you're Chinese on the outside, but not on the inside. So with this constant struggle of trying to fit in among the people from the, the country that you came and then also being perceived as some sort of foreigner in the country that you've been born into or you now live, is, is something pretty unique. So I want to rise in support of this Arab American Heritage Month. I want to thank each and every one of you for everything that you do every day to represent your communities, to inspire young people, to lift up their voices, and to come together for a better community for all of us. I, I mentioned earlier during, during Seek Awareness and Appreciation in my remarks that they were the second most victimized or victims of hate crimes. Second, third being Arab Americans and Muslims. First being Jews. I think there's a lot more that unites us than divides us at the end of the day. And I would call for all of us to continue to work together to find that peace. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise in association with this resolution. I do not have one of the most diverse wards, but I will move up in the rankings as well as the 49th and the 50th. But want to really think really so many in the community that have helped out even before I was elected. Being able to meet folks who are like Vodisarian and other groups that have helped me learn more about how to be a representative elected official when we have such a population, not only in our ward but in our city. We often talk about representation. I, in standing in this resolution, would ask you all to challenge us. Making sure that Mina is counted in the census and that we think about it as important. But it's also making sure that when we hire, when we think about positions of leadership here in city government, that we are thinking about the representation. Because although we all may have shared experiences, there is a uniqueness to each group's experience that we need to be informed by. So yes, we have one month where we can stand to show our support. I challenge you to have us do it every month, 365, to think about what we can do legislatively, what we can do to support organizations, and what we can do in our neighborhoods to make sure that our neighbors that are Middle Eastern, North African, or Arab American know that we are here to serve them like everyone else. And make sure that the inclusion of all the culture, all the knowledge, and all the experience that you bring helps inform and make our city government a better government. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support of this resolution and want to recognize the significance of this month. As Alderman of the 45th Ward, which has a very strong Arab population, primarily Palestinians who introduced me and welcomed me into the Arab culture, I want to show my gratitude. The impact that Arabs have had on me here in Chicago is what encouraged and spurred a lot of my desire for international travel. I merely hope that I can give back half of the love and generosity that Arabs have showed me throughout my life. And I want to thank you and welcome you as brothers and sisters. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Vice Mayor Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also rise in support of this resolution. I just want to say mahabbah and shakram for all of the things that you have contributed to our society and to the city of Chicago. I have found that Arab folks have been some of the smartest people that I have met. Some folks may know in my past life, I used to be a draftsman for the highway department, so I got to work with a lot of Arab engineers. Also attended college trying to be an engineer, taking a lot of calculus classes. We used to always have to compete with the Chinese and Arabs to get good grades in the calculus classes because you guys always were asking, getting, coming up with the answers first. So I just want to say shakram for your contribution to our society. Thank you for everything that you do in this city. Hamdu Allah.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Thank you. Chair. Chair recognizes Helu Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to rise in support of this resolution and thank you all for the hard work that you all do in our great city, especially to Sinead Social Services, which fall in the 14th Ward. We have a huge community also in Chicago Lawn, in Gage Park, that we're so proud to work together alongside with you all. That they serve thousands of people every Friday with their food distribution and helping them to sign up for SITA and for many other services. You have a problem, they have a solution. So that's what I love about Sinead, that there's no problem, big or small. They take them all into consideration and they help them out. Every single person that walks into their office, they get the services that they deserve. And I do want to appreciate for your hard work on a single daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Very well, I do want to acknowledge some of the individuals who are attending today. Abir Abwade, Fatima Abwade, Zayana Zatari, Ahmad Rahab, Dr. Zahid Shalou, Suzanne Salou, Dr. Abhil Gani Hamida, Bilal Almasiri, Kareem Najee, Raed Manassour, Yusuf Vidal, and Yemen Shaheer. And so I'm very proud to stand with, with the rest of the city council members supporting this resolution. We have a very proud and vibrant Arab American community that has contributed to the soul of the city of Chicago through their rich cultures, traditions, and history. Arab Americans have made significant contributions in many areas of multiple industries, making our city a better place to work and to live. Arab American Heritage Month gives us the ability to recognize these contributions while also uplifting and empowering the entire community. And during this month, and at all times, it's important that we continue to foster true awareness about the issues and the challenges our Arab American communities face. And they face them every day. Chicago is a diverse, it's a welcoming city. And we are always working to ensure that we continue to create an inclusive society for all residents. And that is why I'm proud, again, to stand with this body recognizing and celebrating Arab American Heritage Month. Thank you all very much. We have one more resolution. So Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for the passage of this resolution?
Omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Our final resolution is honoring Lesbian Visibility Week. Thank you. Are there any Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Chair recognizes Alder Maria Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of this resolution and thank my colleague Alder Fuentes for bringing it forward with me and thank you, Mayor, for supporting this as well. I want to name a couple of people that are with us here in the box today. So starting off, if you can each maybe just get, I, I told you to practice your wave. So when I call your name, give your wave here. So we have Tracy Bame, co-founder of the Windy City Times. We have Mary Morton, founder of the Morton Group. We have Pat McCombs, co-founder of Executive Suite. We have Norma Selden, Dr. Norma Selden, Director of Leadership Development and Capacity Building at Equality Illinois. Moni Ruiz Velasco, our Deputy Director at Equality Illinois. Taylor Mason, owner of Taylor's Tacos. And Kathy Monzer of Mountain Moving Coffee House. I want to thank all of our guests for being here. So Lesbian Visibility Week, once we pass this, it'll be April 22nd through the 28th. Just a few notable reasons why we felt it was important to bring this forward for city council and for the city of Chicago. We're really seeking to amplify voices of those who are most marginalized within our LGBTQ plus community. Ensuring that our stories are heard and our experience is acknowledged. Just a few lesbian, queer, and non-binary individuals who've played a critical role in our state's history, including some of those who have passed on. We'll name a few. We've got Jane Adams, Lorraine Hansberry, Margaret Anderson, Jane Heap, Pearl Imhart, Valerie Taylor, Jeanette Howard Foster, Ruth Ellis, Renee Hanover, Marge Summitt, Marie J. Cuda, Pat Logue, Vernita Gray, Peg Gray, E. Kitchchild, Jackie Anderson, Hollis Sigler, Renee Ogletree, Joanne Trapani, Marcia Lipitz, Arlene Halco, Mary York, Christina Santiago, Lisa Tana, Paula Walowitz, Diana Rodriguez, and Lauren Verdic. I also want to name some key organizations, right, who have documented and helped the lesbian community, including Lavender Women, Lesbian Community Cancer Project, Amigas Latinas, Affinity Community Services, Executive Suite, the Gerber Heart Library, The Legacy Project, Outlines, and Windy City Times Newspaper. I want to give acknowledgement to all of the city staff, workers, who you may or may not know are part of our LGBTQ community or lesbian community. And Visibility Week is about them too. We still, in this day and time, have people who may not feel comfortable being out in their workplace, being out with their family, being out in public. And that's one of the reasons why Visibility Week is very important and why it's also important for myself, Alder Fuentes, and then of course, our nine-member-strong LGBTQ plus caucus to be present and to make sure that we're standing up for our community. So I want to thank every single person who's here in the box and those who couldn't join us today for being out, for being proud, for being representative of our diverse community, and for being leaders in the city of Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes the chair recognizes Alderwoman Scott.
Good afternoon. I stand in support of this resolution because of my neighbor, Taylor Mason, the owner of Taylor Tacos. Taylor Tacos. I just remember when, we've been neighbors probably for 18 years or so, and I remember when you took your leap of faith, and I've always been in your corner, and I will continue to be in your corner, and I love you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Knudsen.
Thank you so much, Chair. This is just a great group in the box. I want to say thank you to Alders Haddon and Fuentes for bringing this forward. The contribution that lesbians have had on the city of Chicago is quite massive. A lot is sitting in the box. I mean, Tracy Bame, you've been a legend for so long. I've known about you far before I was out and read things you had written far before I was out. And as a member of the LGBTQ plus community, I say thank you. Same with, you know, Moni. I'm an alumnus of one of the Equality Illinois Boards. Equality really kind of trained me in a lot of organizing and politics in Chicago, and I'm so grateful to the organization. And Taylor, I just really love your tacos. I recommend everyone look at Taylor's tacos when they're looking to cater events because they're incredible and it's a great contribution. So I want to thank you again for bringing this forward. I also want to recognize too, that in Chicago, we should be proud of having one of the first black lesbian mayors of the city of Chicago in Mayor Lori Lightfoot. So I want to say thank you for that first and how important that was. And I'm really proud to honor this resolution. Thanks for everybody in the box.
Thank you, Alderman. Chair recognizes Alder Woman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution, and I rise today as the new Chair of the Women's Caucus. So on behalf of all of the women of City Council, thank you. I want to honor each and every one of you for everything that you do each and every day to make sure that your community is seen and that women are seen for who they are just as they are. It's so important for our community of women to support one another and to ensure that no woman feels alone. And I know that, I don't know each of you very well, but I look forward to getting to know you better as a result of this meeting today. But I know that you make a difference every single day, and I wish you all of the best and a future of partnership for all of us to ensure that nobody feels alone in this day and age. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Woman, and congratulations. Chair recognizes Alder Jessie Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank all of the women in the box. I think that you all represent such excellence across the city of Chicago, showing very uniquely and eloquently how fierce lesbian women can be in every sector of work across the city of Chicago. It's in fact the work of many of you all that inspired me to be a leader in my community, to be comfortable in my skin, to be comfortable in the wardrobe I choose to purchase in my closet. And it is because of many women across the city of Chicago who are openly lesbian that have paved the way for folks like Maria and I to be in City Council and to be comfortable in our skin and to lead unapologetically in this legislature and in our wards. This week will allow for us to fulfill that type of, that type of recognition that is needed in our community, but more importantly, it would allow us to call ourselves to action for a lot of the work that is still needed, even in a city like the city of Chicago, where not all spaces are inclusive, where not all spaces are loving and caring. And to belong to a body where we have nine members a part of our LGBTQ caucus and to have members who are allies and in solidarity with our community is an indication of all of the work that you all have been a part of. And for LGBTQ members who are no longer with us, who spent decades getting us here. And I look forward to the next five to six decades in creating a city that we are all very proud of. And I just want to thank my colleague, Alder Woman Maria Haddon, for leading on this effort and getting us here. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Bennett Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise today in strong support of this resolution. My best friend is a lesbian. And I say that because, like Jessie just said, it's weird. It's weird that, it shouldn't be, in an awful way. And I'm going to apologize to you right now for the antics that are happening in the gallery because you don't deserve it and you deserve respect. And the people in our box today are true trailblazers and should be honored as such. And so I stand to do that. I stand to work together to find commonalities in the community that we share and remind us that we have more work to do within our own community and beyond. I want to thank all of you who are here for doing the work that you did that gave us a nine-member caucus in this body, because none of that happens without all of the amazing groundwork that came before us. So thank you all. We have more work to do, and again, I apologize.
The members of the public who are speaking during presentations, it's dishonorable and disrespectful. So, Mr. Sergeant-at-Arms, I would ask that you remove those two rows there, please. Please remove them from the chambers. Could you please remove those individuals? Mr. Sergeant-at-Arms, please continue. Thank you, Sergeant-at-Arms, for restoring some order. Thank you for your patience. It pains me to have to do that. The chair recognizes Alder Manah Happenworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleagues, Alder Jessie Fuentes and Alder Maria Haddon, for bringing this forward. I represent Edgewater and Andersonville, and we are one of the coolest neighborhoods in the world, and it is because of lesbians. It wasn't too long ago that we had, you know, blocks and blocks of lesbian-owned small businesses, including The Landmark, which my small business is thriving still today, Tomboy Tees, Stargaze Studio 90. And so when we think about the survival of neighborhoods, I think about Andersonville that is still anchored by the fantastic business Women and Children First, who we should all think about in our own neighborhoods, supporting locally-owned small businesses, especially those who are lesbian-owned and operated. I want to thank everyone in the box, and in particular, you know, those who I know and I would like to say, I would like to say I'm your friend, because we have been working so hard since the Women's Marches since 2016, and we are still underrepresented. I want to thank all of you who have worked so hard for social justice, including marriage equality in the state of Illinois, and my friend Tracy Bame, who I worked with at the Chicago Reader, and who created such a safe space for us, so much so that I found myself and came out as queer because of that safe space. And that's what we're trying to do here, is to create spaces for people, no matter what age they are, to find themselves and to live authentically. So I want to extend gratitude for you for being here. I know so many of you could not be here, but I'm so grateful for all the work that you're doing, especially around social justice and civic engagements, housing for everybody, including young people who have been outcast from their own families in the LGBTQ plus communities, including healthcare, mental health. And all of that, we know, leads to more public safety for everybody. So I want to thank you for all your work, and I can't wait to celebrate with you more and to do more work ahead. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am so proud to rise in association with this resolution. I just look at y'all and y'all are just champions and fighters, and as much as, you know, there may have been some disorder happening a little earlier, I know that that's nothing compared to the things that y'all have actually fought against to even have us to the position where you can have these conversations here. I see some OGs in this box that have taught me, taught me how to be better. Before I came into office, I remember sitting down with Tracy to grab coffee, and I just can't picture what it's like being you all, watching us little young Oregonites thinking we're doing something, compared to what you all have actually done. The way you changed the conversation and made sure that it's not just about unapologetic and proud, it's leading on the front lines. It is changing government. It is making organizations. To have that kind of leadership that challenges us to be better, to be able to talk to Moni regularly to make sure I'm better, they have 40th Ward neighbors like Mary Morton here with us, Jackie Kaplan Perkins, the organizations that allow us to be allies for real, because what we understand is the struggles that y'all have gone through and the coalitions that you all build span more than just identity. It makes us stronger when it comes to everything we have to fight and all the oppression everybody feels. We all may feel we have it tough, we had nowhere near what some of y'all went through. And to see y'all break through those barriers makes us stronger and makes us better, and I can't thank you all enough for that. When we have even business owners coming to the ward like Nobody's Darling, Whiskey Girls Tavern, and being able to find ways to support our newest generations of leadership, our current generations here, I just can't thank y'all enough, and I just ask you for more. Push us further, blow up the phones, send the text messages, anything we need to work, any letters we have to sign, any legislation, we are here because y'all have got us this far, and we all know the fight ain't over yet. So thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Byron Sigcho Lopez.
Can you hear me, Chair?
Now we can.
Yeah, thank you. I also like to be added with this resolution, and also want to recognize a few of the people that are, even though I'm remote, Tracy Bame and many of the freedom fighters that continue to our city, our city celebrates our diversity, our city celebrates the wonderful work and the commitment to social justice. Tracy is not only an advocate, but also as a reporter, reminds me about the importance of local reporting, so that the tolerance, and I would say the tolerance is not the word here, but the values and the opportunity that we have to build a city together. It is something that our elders, our ancestors have built and continues to give us an example. So I want to thank you all, everybody at the bench, and everybody who continues to believe that a new city and a new day is possible. And I think it is critical today that we build a city together, see the opportunity of the moment. Thank you all for being those trailblazers and those example of integrity. Our diversity is the strength of our city, and a new day is possible because of all of you. Thank you so much. It reminds me also, and I will be remiss in my own mention, our good friend, and we talked about it this, Tracy, Kit Duffy, who was a great mentor and an example of the city. So thank you so much. I've just celebrated Carl Washington's birthday, Mayor Washington, and that legacy of a strong Rainbow Coalition is alive and well. Thank you so much for all of you for building a city together.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? The chair recognizes Alderman Rosa.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. You know, I want to join with my colleagues in offering sincere apologies for the heckling and remarks that were made today. While that's deeply disappointing, it's a reminder of why we need Lesbian Visibility Day. We've come a long way, and we've come a long way in part because of our honored guests in that box. But we know that there is so much more that we must do to get to true equality, to get to a place in time where everyone can be their authentic self, love who they love, and live their lives with dignity. So I want to thank my lesbian sisters for all the work that you have done to open up the path for a person like me to be able to say that I'm a proud gay man, because our movement would not be here but for our lesbian sisters and their pride, their strength, their leadership. So thank you, thank you, thank you. It's an honor to be in this fight and in this struggle with you, and we're going to make it to the end of the rainbow where all of us are free. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? All right, very well. Thank you, Alder Woman Haddon, for acknowledging our special guests that are in the box today, this entire body, this council. As we speak favorably towards this resolution, it's a good opportunity for us to be reminded that the city of Chicago is home of a very vibrant and proud, hard-working LGBTQ plus community who have made indelible contributions in every area, who have ultimately helped make the city stronger, better, safer. The Lesbian Visibility Week was created to celebrate the diversity and contributions of lesbian, queer, and non-binary individuals in our wonderful city. This week helps to amplify the voices of those often marginalized in the LGBTQ plus community, and it also allows us to ensure that their voices and stories are heard. It also serves as a point of emphasis, the importance of unity, while acknowledging our differences and the unique perspectives that we bring to this amazing city. Chicago is committed to being welcoming and diverse and equitable, a city that is just as we stand with the LGBTQ plus community, and of course, to ultimately create a more inclusive society for everyone. And that is why I'm very proud that we stand with you all to recognize Lesbian Visibility All right, very well. Alderman Mitchell, can I get a resolution?
Mr. President, I move, Mr. President, I move passage in the omnibus.
All right, very well. Hearing no objections, so ordered. All right. Alderman Mitchell, to return to the regular order of business.
I move that we return to the regular order of business. I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Thank you very much. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Communications.
Communications, from the honor of the mayor to the honorable of the city council of the city of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the controller to transmit here with an ordinance amending the municipal code to establish water leak relief pilot program. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of housing to transmit with here an ordinance authorizing the execution of a TIF redevelopment agreement with Renew Law &amp; Deal Acquisitions LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of planning and development to transmit here with an ordinance authorizing funding the Small Business Improvement Fund Program and the execution of the 64th Amendment Administrative Services Agreement with the Soma Core 504, Inc. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the budget director to transmit here with a fund 925 amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on budget and government operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of housing to transmit here with ordinances authorizing favorable tax status for specified properties located within the city. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on economic capital and technology development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of housing to transmit here with an ordinance amending the municipal code to clarify the affordable requirements ordinance. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of planning and development to transmit here with ordinances authorizing negotiated sale of city-owned properties. Your favorable consideration of this ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of planning and development to transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned properties to adjacent neighborhoods. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of planning and development to transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned properties for open spaces use. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of housing to transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of loan subordination agreement with Pelmark Realty Corporation for the Lincoln Village senior apartments. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of fleet and facility management to transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended intergovernmental agreement with Chicago Park District for use of city property located at 5801 North Plasky Road. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of housing to transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended services with Uncork Incorporated. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of housing to transmit here with an ordinance providing authority to enter into nondisclosure agreements. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor. With two committees being called, this will go to rules. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of housing to transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the transfer of city-owned lots for housing development purposes. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the commissioner of planning and development to transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of renewed intergovernmental agreement, Chicago Park District and the Forest Preserve District of Cook County to support neighbor space. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on special events and cultural affairs and recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, the question commissioner of planning and development to transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of adopt a landmark agreement with ECG Madison LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed John Zias, the member of the Community Development Commission, for a term effective immediately and expiring February 26, 2028, to succeed Mark V. Brooks, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on economic capital and technology development. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Ira Akri as a member of the Regional Transportation Authority Board for a term effective immediately and expiring July 1, 2027, to succeed Thomas J. Codell, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on transportation and public way. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Tanya Kadaka as a member of the Plan Commission for a term effective immediately and expiring January 25, 2029, to succeed Smeeta Shaw, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Adrian Soto as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring July 1, 2029. Such period allocated as follows: A term effective immediately and expiring July 1, 2024, to complete the unexpired term of Sam P. Toya, who has resigned, followed immediately by a full five-year term. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance, our appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Vishali Rao as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring July 1, 2029. Such period allocated as follows: A term effective immediately and expiring July 1, 2024, to complete the unexpired term of Timothy Knutson, who has resigned, followed immediately by a full five-year term. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Camina Brooks as a member of the Planning Commission or Plan Commission for a term effective immediately and expiring January 25, 2029, to succeed Deborah Seymour, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of this appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on economic capital and technology development. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, hereby inform the city council that the following documents are filed in my office related to the respective subjects designated as follows: Office of Inspector General's Report Concerning Unprocessed Routine Background Investigations for Individuals Applying for Employment for Chicago Police Department; Office Inspector General's First Quarter Report of Year 2024; Tabulated Statement of Returns and Proclamation of Results of Canvas of Election Returns on March 19, 2024, General Primary Election. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the city council that all those matters were considered by the city council at the regular meeting held on March 2024, and which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on April 17, 2024, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of the city council of the city of Chicago. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the city council that the resolution and matters related thereto, which were considered by the city council at the special meeting held on April 1, 2024, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on April 17, 2024, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of the city council of the city of Chicago. I, City Clerk Valencia, also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring city council action: Zoning Reclassifications of Particular Areas Referring to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards; Claims Against the City of Chicago, which refer to the committee on finance; Recommendation by Commissioner of Chicago Landmarks for Designation of John V. Murphy Memorial at 50 East Erie Street as a Chicago Landmark, which refer to the committee on zoning landmarks and building standards; Submission to Referendum Question to Chicago Voters Regarding Taxpayer Subsidies to Chicago Bears or Chicago White Sox, or to build new stadium or real estate development, which refer to committee on committee on rules. Your honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the mayor and other city officers.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Committee reports. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the city council, reporting for the city council's Committee on Finance, which held a committee meeting on April 15 and reconvened on April 17, 2024. The following items received a due pass recommendation from the committee. Item number one is an ordinance concerning a loan restructuring agreement with Warren Ashland LP Halsted Limited Partnership for the property at 1533 West Warren Boulevard, 3 North Ashland Avenue, and 11 North Ashland Avenue in the 27th Ward. Mr. President, unless someone wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Seeing no hands, members, please use the e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. Raise your hand if you need support. The voting is now open.
Is right, I can do that?
I was charged by a violation of the Navy.
Just a second, Alderman, just for a second. That's okay. The chair recognizes, that's okay. The chair recognizes Alderman Conway.
If I could be added to the quorum, please. Thank you.
Good.
We got you. Alderman Conway will be added to the quorum. All right, I will now call on anyone who has not cast their vote, and also anyone online. Alderman Robinson. Alderman Robinson? Okay, Alder Woman Taylor.
Yes.
Alder Woman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Sigchel Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sigchel Lopez is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Not in chambers. All right, let me go right back to Alderman Robinson. Are you there? Okay, Alderman Robinson is not.
Robinson is a yeah.
Alderman Robinson is a yes. Okay. All right, we are, anyone else? Okay, we are now closing the vote.
There are 48 yays, zero nays. This matter is passed. Alderman Mitchell, and a motion to reconsider?
Mr. President, move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. This motion fails. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two is an ordinance concerning the First Amendment to the issuance of multifamily program funds to Home Keep LLC under the preservation of existing affordable rental program for the property at 2537 North Lowell Avenue, 2904 North Linder Avenue, and 4510 North Central Park Avenue in the 31st and 33rd Ward. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is a substitute ordinance concerning the issuance of TIF funds to Ogden Washinaw A2 Residential LP for the Ogden Washinaw A2 Residential Project at 1312 South Tallman Avenue, in the amount up to $9 million in TIF funds in the 28th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four was previously deferred and published. Item five and six consist of orders of authorization for the payment of various small claims against the city of Chicago and the denials of payments of various small claims against the city of Chicago. If there are no objections, I move that these items be placed in the passage for, in the omnibus.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number seven are proposed orders authorizing charitable solicitation on the public way, tag days, permits for grassroots team LLC, better known as Amnesty International, from April 18 to August 30, 2024, and international rescue committee from April 29 through December 31, 2024. This will be placed on file with the clerk. Item number eight is the report of cases in which verdicts, judgments, or settlements were entered into for the month of March 2024. This will be placed on file with the clerk. Item number nine A is an order authorizing corporation counsel to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Felicia Pettis versus City of Chicago and Stephen Leiracus, case number 2020L12425, in the amount of $175,000. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number nine B is an order authorizing corporation counsel to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Marilyn Salazar versus Erica Perez and the City of Chicago, case number 2019L9823, in the amount of $385,000. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number nine C is an order authorizing corporation counsel to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Brian Mejia versus City of Chicago, case number 2021L004753, in the amount of $750,000. I move passage of this item by the same motion, with the exception of Alderman Quinn, Lopez, Curtis, Cardona, Spazato, and Riley, who all wish to be recording as voting no.
I can add Gardner. I see Taboris' hand and Napolitano's hand, Chico's hand. And the chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman Riley and I move to defer and publish this item.
I already moved passage of it.
Okay, it'll be deferred and published.
The Committee on Finance also met on March 22 and April 11 for subject matter hearings to discuss the issuance of general obligation and/or sales tax securitization corporation bonds for economic development and affordable housing programs. No votes were taken at these meetings. Mr. President, this concludes my report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. The chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President, reporting for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations for a meeting which was held on April 15. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following item. Item number three is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning a transfer of funds within the 39th Ward automatic expense account and award wage allowance for year 2024. Ordinance 2024-0008163. I move to concur, move passage of the item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee on, Chair recognizes Alderman Rosa.
Yes, please. Unfortunately, I had to step out, but I would like to be recorded as voting yes on the first item of the Finance Committee report.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Please add, Mr. Clerk, please add Alderman Rosa as a yes vote. Next up, Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Mitz.
Thank you, Mr. President, reporting for the Committee on Contracts, Oversight, and Equity. We held a meeting on April 2024 to consider the following. Item number one, R2024-0008330, an expression of support for MWDBE program, and calling for U.S. Congress to protect the U.S. Department of Transportation Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program, sponsored by Alderman Mitz. Mr. President, if no one wants, wished to speak on that, I would like to make a statement.
So we do have one alder that wishes to speak. I don't see any other hands. Are you good? All right, so back to you, Alder Woman Chair. Chair, what is it? What am I doing here? Chairwoman, back to you.
Thank you. This is a very challenging time for women's and minority contractors. They are continuing to face discrimination in the construction industry from being picked as a subcontractor on projects to ensure bonding, to obtain financing, so they can survive while they're waiting for the city to pay. With payments delayed exceeding 180 days, they need lots of financing. Now they're facing an even bigger threat. Several lawsuits challenging the DBE program have been filed in cities across our countries. One lawsuit that is pending in federal court in Kentucky could wipe out the DBE program nationwide. This resolution is urging congressmen to do more, whatever is necessary, to prevent the DBE program. Here in Chicago, the city council put the MWBE program in place to help level the playing field, so women's and minorities have equal access to contracting opportunities here. We will defend our MWBE program and take whatever steps are necessary to ensure women's and minority contractors have equal access to Chicago construction opportunities. But we can't do it alone, and we are pleased to once again... But we can't do it alone, and we are pleased to once again have partners WCOE, AACE, BCOE, FWC, and HACIA working in lockstep with us to get this done. Mr. President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the Contract Oversight and Equity Committee by the same roll call as item number one on the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
All right, the chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
This is item number one or two.
Item number one. Yes, can you bring your mic towards you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, she was still on eighty-three thirty, she was just commenting on the M W B?
That is, that is correct.
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, Mr. President, that's it. I just wanted to be clear.
All right, very well. So seeing no other hands, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two, zero two zero four dash zero 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 eight three five two. An ordinance to execute a master service agreement with Data Made LLC for research, design, development, hosting, and support of public face-facing application regarding planning, development, and zoning development process and other city operations sponsored by Mayor Johnson. Mr. Mayor, I think this is the Alderman Moore would like to speak on this item.
I noticed that his hand went up. Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately for me, as I attended the meeting of contract oversight and development here, Committee on Contract Oversight and Equity, I mean, the fact that this is a sole source contract and the testimony that was given, that there were no other vendors, specifically minority vendors, and specifically African-American vendors that couldn't do this work, did not sit well with me, so as I did my due diligence, I found out that there were. And in my opinion, this should not be a sole source contract, and I think there are some dialogue and more information needed to be had, I believe, with probably the members of the Black Caucus, and then if they want to determine that they're satisfied with it, then we can bring it up for a vote. But until then, myself and Alderman Raymond Lopez move to defer and publish this item.
All right, thank you. The item will be deferred and published. Chairwoman Mitz.
Mr. President, that would conclude my, my report.
Very well, thank you, Chairwoman. The Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, the chair recognizes Chairman Viegas.
Thank you. Mr. President, member of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which met on Tuesday, April ninth, twenty twenty-four. The committee held a meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Item one on the agenda is the appointment of Nick Lucius as Chief Information Officer, which was collectively voted on by the committee members and introduced by Mayor Johnson at the March twentieth City Council meeting. If anyone wishes to speak on this item, I reserve the right to close.
Very well, other, the chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, as I was investigating this situation regarding the contract, and as I began to talk to, as I tell people, we got to talk to people that we know and that we trust. I know we can go sometimes by resumes and things like that, but it has come to my attention that on this confirmation, that most of the business vendor community believe that this person is not experienced enough to be the CIO of the third largest city in the United States. They pointed out, and with some support, support documentation to me, that no prior experience ever running a technology division or department has no prior experience as a CIO, which is normally in the set, which is usually set when a person is being presented, has limited experience in managing any large scales technology projects or programs. As I tell people in this business, as Alderman, we get, we get to deal with a lot, and, and I don't claim to be a subject matter expert, especially in technology, but we haven't done our due diligence, African-American community, for people that we're going to make sure that have our best interests at hand, and making sure that there's equity in that office, meaning representation in that office, and in contracting, that when people in our community who is our, in those spaces, are having these concerns, then we have to stand up and speak for them. And so until, I believe, a conversation again is had with the Black Caucus, and if they feel comfortable about it and want to move forward with it, then at that time we will. So at this time, along with Alderman Lopez, we defer and publish this item. Thank you.
The item will be deferred and published. Chair recognizes Chairman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Items two through ten on the report are a series of appointments to various special service areas. The following individuals are being considered before the committee. Number two and three, appointments of Joseph Chico and Jessica Smith to SSA number five, Commercial Avenue Commission, located in Seventh and Tenth Wards. Appointment of P. Matt Letterer to SSA number twenty-seven, West Lakeview Commission. Number five and six, appointments of Eva B. Baldinger and Sarah M. Dalkin to SSA number twenty-nine dash twenty-fourteen, the West Town Commission. Appointment of Shante A. McDonald to SSA number forty-two, Seventy-first Street Stony Commission. Number eight and nine, appointments of Jelena Vetskosva and Kurt L. Mayman to SSA number sixty, Albany Park Commission. Number ten, appointment of Charles Newsom, SSA number sixty-one dash twenty-twenty-three, Hyde Park Commission. I move for passage of these appointments by the first favorable roll call of the, of the, the roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item eleven on the report is an ordinance to approve the issuance of a Class six B tax incentive for the property at four thousand nine hundred to four thousand nine hundred forty West Grand Avenue in the Thirty-sixth Ward. I move for passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so moved.
Thank you, Madam President, that concludes my report.
Next up, we have reports from the Committee on Housing and Real Estate.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held an in-person meeting on Wednesday, April tenth, twenty twenty-four. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of four ordinances and one resolution. These include a lease agreement, a land sale, a municipal code amendment, and one resolution calling for a hearing. The first item is from the Department of Fleet and Facility Management. Item one, ordinance two zero two four zero 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 eight four one zero, renewal of lease agreement with Chicago Children's Advocacy Center for Building and Parking Facility located at twelve forty South Damon Avenue, supporting centralization of medical and mental health experts, children protective services, law enforcement, and family advocates in the Twenty-eighth Ward. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the committee, on, on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The next item is from the Department of Planning and Development.
How do girls?
Item two, ordinance two zero two four zero 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 eight four one four, sale of vacant city as is property at four thousand seven hundred forty-one South Indiana Avenue in combination with owner's property at four thousand seven hundred thirty-nine and four thousand seven hundred forty-three South Indiana Avenue for development and construction of two, three-story residential buildings. I move passage of this items by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The following is an automatic. The following is an automatic introduction by first word Alderman Daniel Laspada. Item three zero two, ordinance two zero two four zero 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 eight two four four, designation of two thousand to two thousand twenty, two hundred ninety-fourth North Milwaukee Avenue as low affordability community, first ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The last two items are automatic introductions from Thirty-sixth Ward Alderman Gilbert Viegas. Both items passed as substitute in committee. Item four, substitute ordinance two zero two four zero 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 six nine eight two, call for hearings on CHA's plan of action to address vacancy rates of scattered site properties. And item five, substitute ordinance two zero two three zero 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 two eight eight eight, amendment of municipal code, section two dash four four dash zero eight five, regarding veteran preference for residential housing purchasers of renters under affordability requirements. Madam President, I, Mr. President?
I'm back. It's all good. See, that's not the worst thing to be called, madam, I'm just saying. It's my honor.
All right. Hey, we needed that, guys. I understand that Chairman Viegas would like to speak on this matter.
Very well, the chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, I want to thank the Housing Committee for voting favorably for this ordinance, and this is a landmark ordinance that we're passing today. This is an ordinance that's focused around the ARO. Often times, the veteran community is always talked about, is always singled out around the homeless community. And so every time we talk about the homeless community, they say that veterans, we need to do more for our veterans. What this ordinance does is exactly that. It puts forward a mechanism to identify at least ten percent of the ARO for veterans. The veteran community in Washington, Congress in Washington, D.C. is working very hard to bring additional resources to the veteran community. The Veteran Affairs Supportive Housing, often known as VASH vouchers, are putting forth tons of money which would allow for the veteran, the veteran community to be more attractive for developers that are looking to fulfill the ARO requirement. This ordinance will greatly improve the lives of Chicago veterans by providing them with more affordable housing opportunities. According to the VA and the Department of Housing and Urban Development, in twenty twenty-three, the number of veterans experiencing homelessness in the U.S. increased by seven point four percent from the year prior. Veterans homelessness is an urgent issue that needs to be addressed, and this ordinance is an important step for us to take as a city. This ordinance will require certain developers in Chicago to establish a process to give preference to veterans for at least ten percent of the minimum number of affordable units under the affordability requirements ordinance. Additionally, this ordinance will require minimum periods during which developers must market to and reserve affordable units for veterans, improving outreach efforts. Again, thank you for the support of this ordinance. I believe that this is one of the first set-asides in the country around ARO for veteran community, and I urge my colleagues to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Chairman Mitchell.
Thank you for that.
You got that chairman.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Chairman Viegas. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, that includes my report.
Thank you. Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. All right, we'll move on. All right, Committee on License and Consumer Protection, chair recognizes Alderwoman Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of City Council. I am reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on April tenth, twenty twenty-four, to consider four ordinances regarding liquor moratoriums in the Twenty-first, Thirty-fourth, and Forty-eighth Wards. The committee has recommended passage of each of these items, O twenty twenty-four dash zero 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 eight two two seven, and others ending eight three two nine, eight three three one, and eight three eight eight. Mr. President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendations of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
O twenty twenty-four dash zero 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 eight three seven eight, an ordinance to amend chapter nine dash one three zero of the Municipal Code of Chicago regulating scooter-sharing business licenses introduced by the Office of the Mayor and Department of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection. I move passage of this item by the same motion with the exception of Aldermans Quinn and Tabarez and Lopez. If there is no other objection.
Hearing none, despite the division, so ordered.
O two zero two four dash zero 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 eight four zero zero, an ordinance to amend chapter nine of the Municipal Code of Chicago regarding pedicab license decal requirements sponsored by Alderman Riley. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
O two zero two four dash zero 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 eight four four six was held in committee. Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Committee on Immigrant and Refugee, Refugee Rights, the chair recognizes Chairperson Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights, which held a committee meeting on March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. There was one item on the agenda, O O two zero two four dash zero 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 eight three eight six, to expand new arrival shelter exit reporting, which then passed as substitute ordinance, S O two zero two four dash zero 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 eight three eight six. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, the chair recognizes Chairperson Laspada.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Before the committee, there were one hundred and seventy-eight routine traffic items, all of which passed. If there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote from the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider the vote.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, the Committee on Police and Fire, the chair recognizes Chairman Talia Faro.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Police and Fire, for which a meeting was held April first, twenty twenty-four. There are two items on the agenda for which the committee recommended passage. The committee recommends the passage of substitute ordinance as amended twenty twenty-three dash five seven two six, the amendment of municipal code, section two dash one five two dash four one zero, by modifying the mandatory retirement age for police officers. Mr. President, if there is no objection, I move the passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call in the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, also before the committee, in which the committee recommended the passage, substitute ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seven seven five nine. The substitute ordinance calling on Mayor Brandon Johnson to remedy by ward choice, whether to remedy by ward choice, whether to remove sound thinking, shot spotter, surveillance technology with other assurances, and advance notifications to affect the ward council members choosing to retain this surveillance technology.
Chair, please, continue.
Mr. President, if there is no objection, I move the passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Mr. President, Alderwoman Rosana Rodriguez-Santiz and I move to defer and publish this item.
This item will be deferred and published. Chair recognizes Chairman Talia Faro.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, the Committee on Public Safety, chair recognizes Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. President, reporting for your Committee on Public Safety, which held a meeting pursuant to published notice on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. The committee had three items on the agenda. Item one was approval of the Rule forty-five report for March. Item two, mayoral ordinance eight three seven three, establishment of a security footprint zone, including regulations and authority over convention. and authority over convention-related activities and agreements regarding hosting of the Democratic National Convention during the month of August 2024. If no one wishes to speak, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call in the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Seeing no hands, hearing no objections, so ordered.
The third item was a subject matter only item, no vote was taken, regarding acquisition of a Bell 429 police helicopter at a cost of $11 million paid for by the DNC. No vote was taken on that matter. More information is available on the Clerk's website and the Public Safety Committee website at aldermanhopkins.com. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next Committee, Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Chair recognizes Chairman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President, reporting for your Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, Recreation, also known as the Happy Committee, which held a meeting on April 10th, 2024. The Committee recommends passes of the following items, R2023-0002814. Congratulations extended to hip-hop, Chicago hip-hop community on the 50th anniversary of hip-hop.
Well done, Chairman, well done.
I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if my colleague would like to say something. Could we allow him if he chooses to see here? He's gone. Okay, I guess it's not that important to him. But I move passes this item by the first favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Simmer down, all right. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Like I said, it's the Happy Committee. We gotta lighten things up over here, people. Ordinance number 2024-0008346, expenditure of open space impact fees for environmental cleanup costs at 2420 North Sacramento. I move passage to this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and an associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no, hearing no objection, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item A, 2024-0008363, the appointment, oh, she is there, okay. Hope we don't have any games, people. Appointment of Clenee Hedspeth as Commissioner of Department of Cultural Affairs and Special I would like to speak last, if anybody would like to speak.
Yes, the Chair recognizes Alderman Ray Lopez.
Challenge accepted, Nick. No, just kidding. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. President, members of the Committee. I do not rise to DNP this appointment, but I do rise to congratulate you and to thank you for reaching out to my office. I look forward to welcoming you and some of my old colleagues back to the 15th Ward. And I think personally, seeing an expansion of activities in our neighborhoods where festivals and events and activities are decentralized, continue to be decentralized out of downtown and into the 77 neighborhoods that make up the greatest city in the world, I look forward to the opportunity of working with you and your team, old and new, to make that happen and wish you all the best in this role and urge you to make the Taste of Chicago a full 10-day experience of food and fun once again throughout both downtown and the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we always try to say, as long as you qualified, whoever comes into this offer has the right to appoint anyone that they want to appoint. And I stand in fully support of this appointment, Mr. President. A fine selection was made. Yes, we will miss the prior person that was here, but that doesn't mean that God doesn't have somebody else ready that can step in and do just as better of a job. And so I am happy, number one, just elated. I don't even sit on a committee that you, you reached out to me, I don't sit on a, on a committee. You also opened your time up to have further conversations, not only to get to know you from a business standpoint, but to get to know who you are. And that person who you are is somebody that we need in this council. So I'm in full support of this, and I, and I hope with a unanimous, unanimous vote, I move that we definitely support this nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to commend you for this appointment. I really appreciate my colleague's statement that an executive has the right to appoint who they want for a commissioner. Thank you for that. Want to make sure I also give much credit for the commissioner here. I think when we think about what this city can do, how it uplifts people from their experience and how challenging it can be to survive in this city, there are many of us who, if it wasn't for art or music or the ability to express ourselves, wouldn't be here now. And so I really appreciate having you in a position to help continue that legacy that Chicago has of being the soul, not just of this city, but of the country. There's a lot that everyone can learn from Chicago, and if they pay attention to the music, if they look at the art, if they hear what we have to bring, will increase our tourism, will increase our economy. And so I look forward to partnering with you in every chance that we can. And so when me and Nick work on our next mixtape together, want to make sure we could pump that out with you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much. All right, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise as the Vice Chair of Special Events Committee, the Happy Committee, as Nick calls it, in support of this appointment, and I look forward to working with you. We had an amazing conversation. Like, like we've all said, you have an amazing staff, and we just look, we look and we continue, we will continue to work with you and support you the best way that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also rise in support of this, this appointment and commend you on this appointment as the former Chair of the Special Events Committee years ago. How many years ago? All right, you've been talking to the mayor, man? Okay, okay. Anyway, so I just want to say, appreciate your comments at the committee hearing. I want to thank you and everyone who take these positions, just like the former positions that we were trying to do appointments on. First of all, thank you for bringing your friends and your family. We need to recognize that people bring down their friends, their families, their kids, their grandparents. You know, we need to recognize that when we get up and talk about folks and be cognizant of the folks that's, you know, there with them, because it may tank them for the rest of their lives. So I just want to say, I commend you for taking on this task. I know a lot of folks come to the city who could actually get more money working somewhere else. So we really appreciate your civic duty. I'd like to also commend you on the advisor that you have next to you, who have worked for procurement many years ago and probably many other city departments many years ago, and has a, a, a great experience on dealing with the city budgets, contracts, and all of those things. So you're very fortunate to have them on your side, even though you probably don't want them in your work business, you know. But, but I just want to say hello to Mr. Radcliffe, Troy. How you doing, Troy? But, but I commend you on taking on this position. I look forward to working with you. Your comments was very on point about the future of attracting more people to the city of Chicago. Special Events is very important because it, it can potentially help our economic engine continue to grow. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I look forward to working with you. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this. I just wanted to take a minute to thank you for your professionalism, for reaching out, for sharing your wisdom with us. Just those little things, I think, in life mean a big difference, and I wish you nothing but the best, and I want to thank your family for coming here today to celebrate with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Yancy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I want to congratulate 5th Ward Resident Clenee Hedspeth, who's also a longtime president of the Hyde Park Historical Society. Great things come from the 5th Ward, and you are one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Chair recognizes Alderman William Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to stand and rise in support of this appointment and also want to say that your history and the work that you've done to share history is phenomenal. And so I'm looking forward to neighborhood history, cultural currency, and a better Chicago through the work of you and your great team that has held it down in anticipation of this. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other Alders wish to speak before we give the final words to our Chair? Seeing no other hands, the Chair recognizes Chairman Spazado.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Clenee, welcome aboard. You know you've been here about a month already, I believe, so you inherited an awesome staff. I'm sure it's a fun job, a lot of positive things to do. So we look forward to working with you. As you know, in your attempts, some people are easier to get a hold of than others, so hopefully people answer your phones a little more often in the future when they're looking to need things, and just look forward to working with you and all the great things that we're going to continue to do for this city. Many of us will have some great ideas that I'll be sharing with you. And like I say, once again, congratulations and look forward to working with you. So with that, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Congratulations, Ms. Hedspeth. Okay, just a little space over here for our Chairperson. Thank you. The Chair recognizes, again, Chairman Spazado.
Thanks once again, Mr. President. The following items have been grouped together for convenience. Item A, 2024-0008364, the appointment of Robert D. Castaneda for Commissioner of Chicago Park District. Item A, 2024-0008365, the appointment of Sean C. Garrett as Commissioner of Chicago Park District. A, 2024-0008366, the appointment of Philip J. Jackson as Commissioner of the Chicago Park District. A, 2024-0008367, the appointment of Koya Paz as Commissioner of Chicago Park District. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote on the Committee of Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Chair recognizes Chairman Mitchell.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, which held a meeting on April 10th, 2024. The following items passed by the majority of the members present. Page 2, Item 1, Ordinance 2024-0008347 is a mayoral ordinance introduced by the Office of the Mayor. Page 2, Item 2, Ordinance 2024-0008368 is a mayoral ordinance for the appointment of Dr. Michael Eady to the Chicago Transit Board. Pages 3 through 5 includes 19 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local Alderman from Wards 5, 6, 11, 18, 20, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 38, 43, 44, and 47. Page 6 includes Items, Item Ordinance 2024-0008375, a subdivision ordinance for a property located in the 45th Ward. Page 7 includes Item 02, Ordinance 2024-0007914, an easement ordinance for a property located in the 4th Ward. Page 7 includes Item Ordinance 2024-0008397, a dedication ordinance for a property located in the 7th Ward. Page 7 includes Item Ordinance 2024-0008155, a vacation ordinance for a property located in the 11th Ward, and Item Ordinance 2024-7699, a vacation ordinance located in the 25th Ward. If there is no objection, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the, and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee on Workforce Development, Chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for the Committee on Workforce Development, which held a meeting on Thursday, April 11th, 2024, there was one item on the agenda, O2023-0002891, an Amendment of Municipal Code Section 2-74-020 regarding veteran preference initiatives and requirements for sitting hiring. At the meeting, a substitute ordinance was adopted, SO2023-0002891, which was passed out of a committee by unanimous votes. Before I move passage, Chairperson Villegas has asked to speak to this item.
The Chair recognizes, okay, the Chair recognizes Alderman Conway.
I rise very much in support of this, you know, as someone that was still in the, still in the Navy, but sent overseas twice. When, when you're deployed in a war environment, you have a very specific mission, whether it is watching an Al Qaeda training camp or Russian submarine activity, that is your entire life. You're probably carrying a gun the whole time, you're in a, you're in a dangerous area, and that is your entire life. And then one day, it stops. Here, here are your demobilization orders, time to go home. And then you come home and you're just displaced, you're there kind of back with your family, you don't really have a lot of structure in your life, and it's, it's just very jarring. And it's those kind of folks that we, that we really need to help. So I, having experienced that myself, I just want to thank you all in this body and Chairman Villegas for leading, leading this effort to, to help veterans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Villegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to support this ordinance. The second ordinance that we introduced will mandate the creation of a citywide veterans' hiring preference for city job positions that are outside of public safety. So we have veterans' preference right now for police and fire, but as we know, there are, there are other positions within military that veterans serve in. So whether they're in IT, whether they're a truck driver, or their administration, this allows them an opportunity to be a part of that workforce. And I speak about this ordinance and introduce this ordinance from a personal perspective. As a Marine, 22-years-old, being honorably discharged, going from full employment to unemployment was really disheartening. And I said that if I, if I was ever in a position to put forward a path for veterans to be hired and housed, that I would do it. And so the two ordinances that we have today speak specifically to that. This is a continuation of my work along Helmets to Hard Hats, which was a program I worked with, the Teamster President Mick Jaeger, where we were identifying veterans that could drive, that drove a truck during wartime, but had to go get a CDL license after they were honorably discharged. And then we worked with him with Helmets to Healthcare. And so you could be a phlebotomist, being shot at, and then when you came home, you had to get a license to draw blood. And I think that these are the types of legislation and common sense that we need to introduce so that way we can make Chicago a beacon for veterans when they're honorably discharged and help grow the city's population. Once our ordinance is passed, the Commissioner of Human Resources and the Mayor's Office of Veteran Affairs will develop and publicize this veteran hiring preference. of Veteran Affairs will develop and publicize this veteran hiring preference program, expanding our reach to veterans across our city and across our state. Not only are we helping veterans find employment through this program, but we're helping our cities by attracting new talent to Chicago. Right now, only one in four veterans in our country has a job lined up after leaving the armed forces. With this new ordinance, our city can change those statistics and encourage our veterans to serve in a new way. I strongly ask for an aye vote on this ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
Mr. President, I move that this item be passed by the first most favorable vote of the Committee on Finance, if there's no objections.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
This concludes the report of the Committee on Workforce Development.
Thank you, Chairman. Final report, Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, the Chair recognizes Vice Chair Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held meetings on April 9th and April 16th. These reports were grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by majority of the members present. Document Number A 2024-0008369, the appointment of Marlene Hopkins as the Commissioner of the Department of Buildings. Mr. President, I believe some of my colleagues may want to speak on this matter, so I will reserve the right to close and make the motion.
Very well. Are there any Alders that truly wish to speak on this matter? All right. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Well, I get to be the first one to say, Mr. President, that this is a great appointment. This appointment is long overdue, and this is Marlene's season. Marlene, I'm glad to see you in this position. And I only stood up, to be honest, to say hello to your mother, who I follow you guys on Facebook. And so I have seen her all over Facebook, and I see the love that you have for your mother and how proud your mother must be of you today. And so, Mr. President, I just wanted to give you my thanks for this appointment and to say how great it was.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to enthusiastically support this appointment. And I didn't know that was her mother, I thought it was her sister sitting next to her. All right? But it's good that your mom is here to support you, because I know she has supported you every step of the way, as well as all of us here. And as I said in your confirmation hearing, that this is way past due, that you have been the Commissioner in that department for about 15 years. Because everybody knows, we don't call the Commissioner, you call Marlene.
That's right.
And because if you call the Commissioner, the Commissioner's going to call Marlene. And so just cut straight to the chase and call her directly, because she's going to be the one that serviced your request anyway. But, Marlene, I just wanted to let you know how proud I am of you. We've been a big fan of you here in this city for a long time because of your service. Your work speaks for itself. And so I'm glad that you are finally getting your just due, your star will continue to shine, and this is a great appointment. So thank you for this appointment, Mr. President. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Beal. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to support this appointment. I think this is one of my most favorite appointments ever, and I've been around here for a little while. And so Marlene, who is a true leader and puts all that true leadership and capital letters, I can't begin to tell you what this appointment means to me and my community because Marlene is the boots on the ground. When you out there in the ward, driving around, you're going to bump into Marlene. She's going to be in that little white truck with a pad writing down something, in the computer, typing up something. Marlene is a person you see when you have troubled buildings. She is the lead person. And what I've always loved about you is that you could have sent a staff person, you could have sent anybody, but you come yourself, and you see it with your own eyes, and you evaluate it with your own eyes. For people that don't know, Marlene has wrote all of the recent codes since I've been here for the building department. So when she looks at that book, and it's about that thick, she could tell you just about every piece of code in that book because she understands it, she knows it. And that's super important around here to have somebody at the building department that understands the building code and the law around the building department. Again, she is the specialist in the building department. It is an amazing time in my career to have you sitting here as the Commissioner. I could not be proud of you. But most of all, I'm proud of your mom, who's my constituent and lives next door to my sister. So I said, oh, we going downtown, Marlene's mom going to be down there today. So she sends her love and says, congratulations to you, Marlene, for being such an amazing Black woman and an amazing leader. And again, all of us here are super proud of you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Harris. The Chair recognizes Alderman Will Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in full support. The very first time I met this Commissioner was literally in the car with coal. And we had some issues with some abandoned homes. And on her off day, she came and showed me areas that she was going to get things right. In less than a year, she hasn't not only gotten it right, she's gotten it done with excellence. And so that excellence is seen through the lens of her mother. And so I thank you so much, Commissioner, for always answering the phone, always getting it right, and always showing up. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I too enthusiastically rise in support of this appointment. While I haven't been around as long as some of my colleagues have, I can say unequivocally that since the day that I met Marlene, she's been nothing but the consummate professional. She oozes integrity, and she has a heart for this city like very few others that I know. As a freshman Alderperson, she took me under her wing and taught me quite a bit. And her commitment, as many of my colleagues have already said, knows no bounds. She doesn't ever actually have a day off, or a vacation for that matter, because I've spoken to her on both occasions. Not that any of us should be doing that, but the point is, she takes her job very seriously. She takes this city and the well-being of this city very seriously. And in every single one of these cases where she could easily send somebody else to just drop the hammer on somebody, she also leads with her heart. Because I've seen that also firsthand, where, you know, we had a troubled building and Marlene said, we got to get everybody together. So all of a sudden, we got like 11 different departments together to handle this one case to very, I think, gently and thoughtfully helping this woman get out of her house and get into a better situation and help the entire block. So she makes a difference every day. I thank you for this appointment, Marlene. I thank you for your commitment to this city and to your mother. Thank you for this gift of this amazing woman, and so appreciate everything that she's already done and will continue to do in this new role. Congratulations, Marlene.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Did we?
Yeah, I was.
Go ahead.
I didn't know I was coming up so soon.
That's right.
All right.
But you, are you writing a whole poem over there or something?
All right. Yeah, I should. Well, been here nine years. Marlene was one of the very first people that I talked to, and not only she'd been my Commissioner, she's been like a big sister, a confidant, my therapist at times. And I am really proud that you are finally put in this position, tackles the sentiment of everybody else. This is well overdue, more than qualified, and we look for more and more better things from you. And we've had, we've talked what my mom was going through, what my mom was going through, and now I see. That's the woman. She helped me when my mom was sick and going through some things, and the love that she had for you poured over in her conversations with me. So in addition to your daughter being a phenomenal Commissioner, being a phenomenal worker for us, being a phenomenal friend to me, she's just a phenomenal woman, and we owe that all to you. So thank you for sharing her with us. And, Marlene, we got work to do. All right? Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, I'm a snap for that. That's all right.
All right. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I cannot thank you enough for finally, finally appointing such a great individual. Delayed, but not denied, I think is your testimony. Commissioner, you were right there when Antioch caught on fire. You were in Inglewood on 63rd and Stewart every day when our community was at a huge loss, a pillar of community. You were there to make sure that the process went effortlessly. You were there of comfort for Pastor Dew and the entire Antioch church family. And I know that it was the blessing of when you were in your mother's womb to care for our community. Congratulations. Thank you to our COO for ensuring that we are vetting capable, competent, and qualified candidates. Delayed, but not denied. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support of this appointment. Marlene has always been, we'll call her Johnny on the spot, Jane on the spot with everything. It's funny, I can recall my first time meeting Marlene, and it was in an alley with a building owner. They called me about a back porch issue. Unbeknownst to me, the man had no back porch. And Marlene was very kind in closing his property down. And after that conversation with her, I never questioned anything that she brought to me because I always felt that she had the interest of our community and our city at heart. Again, this is well deserved, long overdue, and tell your daughter next to you that we are all together here. And thanking you for providing such a wonderful soul to all of us here for the city of Chicago. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend you on this appointment. I really appreciate you, Ms. Hopkins. You know, coming into this appointment, I had questions, like some of our constituents had. And for you to come to the office and really break down, like, decision by decision, how you land on certain things, you're a real one in ways that I think we need more of when it comes to government. And so I appreciate that about you. I can't even imagine what it's like serving under the different number of administrations you've served under to see what a person's wishes are and how you deliver on that. Your ability to build relationships speaks to more than just the department you serve. You're building Chicago through so many different lenses that I want to thank you for that. I look forward to partnering with you so we can make sure we hold some of these landlords accountable, as we discussed, and really just really overjoyed to see you in the position. So thank you for serving. Thank you for having your sister in the booth as well. And thank you so much for the appointment, Mayor.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Mitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too stand in support of this resolution. Marlene, we've worked together for a long time. And you know what I like about you is that sort of remind me of myself where when you lay down and allow others to stand up and you wait your time, you have done that throughout the years, and we are grateful for it. So you can't say what someone gave you, you've earned every dime of it. And thank God for it. Thanks for your family who's been there to support you. And just know, it's going to be beautiful for you because you know every in and out of the department already. You have a great staff working for you, and now you can execute those ideas where you couldn't at first, but now you had the power to do so. We're looking forward to those wonderful things that you can see to make the city a better place that all of us will be able to be proud of. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this great appointment. I'll make this very quick, well overdue. In my time here, you've been just a tremendous resource to our office. And just a very quick story, in the process of trying to make the city better and creating ordinances that work better for our city, we've turned one over to you and said, hey, where are we right and where are we wrong with this? And you just blew me away. You were absolutely incredible. You said, Anthony, let's do this, let's remove that, let's make this better on behalf of the city. And that is the way this should all work. And I want to thank you for that. It's not crossed the finish line yet, but just for your input and for you to take the time and bring it down to our level and back up to your level and just create it for the betterment of the city was awesome. And I appreciate that from you. And that's the way government should work. And great appointment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this appointment. I'm going to tell a little story. It was November 24th, 2012, almost 11 years ago. And on that cold November Saturday, we had a terrible fire in my ward, in the Morgan Park community. It was a five-story, 32-unit complex. The fire was so intense, the fifth floor collapsed into the fourth, the fourth into the third. There were several hours people unaccounted for in the building. At one point, we had a May Day call go out, firefighter was unaccounted for. Very scary standing there in the street, watching all this transpire. Luckily, everybody made it out. Luckily, the fireman was found, and we moved forward through the night. That building was occupied primarily by senior citizens. To be candid, Black people without a lot of family to support them. There was no children driving up saying, I'm going to take mom to my place. There was no grandchildren pulling up the check and making sure that everything was okay. These people had nowhere to go. Marlene Hopkins, quarterback that day, she got the Red Cross, the Salvation Army, she got CTA buses to keep freezing cold victims warm. She got the Chicago Public Library to keep the Walker Ranch tours down open. And she stayed there all afternoon into the evening. She stayed there with me. She helped me through this process. The sun had come up the next morning. Marlene Hopkins, this compassionate leader, stayed there to make sure that every single senior citizen was looked after. The beautiful thing for me was I got credit in the local paper the next week. But that, ladies and gentlemen, that is who this individual is. I had an opportunity a few minutes ago to spend a few minutes with her mom. And to her mom, to her brothers, and to her aunt, how proud you must be and how lucky we are. God bless you all. Thanks, Marlene. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, you bet 100. This was a great.
It's a thousand, Alderman. Betting the thousand.
We gonna leave it at that?
Hundred, it's not good.
We got, 100 not enough?
That's no, not what you're betting.
Let's do 100, Mr. President. Let's do 100. This was an awesome, awesome appointment. Marlene, definitely overdue. This is definitely your season. Everyone's talking about her building, going into building, building codes and things like that. You should see her in action. She allowed me to be her Robin, and she was definitely Batman because I stood on the side. But in the middle of the nights, many nights, right in our community, we shut down so many illegal pop-up parties, and you should see her in action. She'll spin around with that cape and start kicking in them doors and kicking those kids out. Awesome thing. I mean, it was great. You know, leaders lead by example. And I don't know, I'm hoping that you continue to come out, you continue to come out and don't leave that up to, you know, your deputies and things like that. You know, you've been great if, not only have it been pop-up parties, but you even called me many times to even do well-being checks on seniors. So I appreciate you wholeheartedly. This was a great appointment and well overdue. You came up through the ranks and you know the job, and I appreciate that. Mayor, once again, 500, 500. 500, Mayor, 500. Marlene, okay, Marlene, 1,000. I got it. Marlene, 1,000.
Thank you.
Great job, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. It's good to be in the Hall of Famer. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
I don't know how to follow that one, but that's all right. But thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon, members of the City Council, and good afternoon. But thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon, members of the City Council, and good afternoon, Commissioner, and to your family and guests. You know, a lot has been said about all the experiences that we've had with Marlene Hopkins over the years. And I think it's truly a testament that even her old boss is here. Judy Friedland, I think, is back here somewhere, well, was back here somewhere. Because everyone is here in a testament to you and to what is going to happen next under your leadership. And as I'm sitting here listening to all of these stories that many of us can recount, you know, I started thinking, Mr. President, of I have good stories where we've been able to save lives and I've had sad stories where we literally were in tears at what we found in the neighborhoods. So much is found in the buildings of the city of Chicago, good and bad. And Marlene and her team have been there with us through it all. I think, as we often do with our commissioners when they are appointed, our department heads, we usually tell them that this is probably the best day of your tenure because it's all downhill once you start working. But for you, you will be the exception. Because you, Marlene, already know and have already earned and already command the respect, love, and admiration of so many in this room, that this is not going to be a one-day honeymoon, but a continuation and the propagation of everything that you've been doing here in the city of Chicago. I'd say throughout this administration's tenure, you are probably the best pick so far. Because we know your heart, we know your work, and we all know the value you have in our neighborhoods. Because yes, we have seen you on the streets, when you probably could have been at home with family or doing other things, you've been there. You've answered the call like all the best that have come before you. And I don't see any reason why that's going to change. And more specifically, that you are now going to continue to build and show the next generation of city administrators and employees what it means to be a proud city of Chicago employee. To have the pride and love of a city and to have it resonate throughout every neighborhood is no easy feat. And yet you make it look so simple. And that's because it was ingrained in you by those who raised you. Continue, carry on, and know that from the first to the 50th and especially in the 15th, you will always have a place to call home. You're always going to have work in my ward, so don't worry. But know that, yes, it is a thousand, but you are someone who, as far as many of us are concerned, are beyond reproach when it comes to your passion, compassion, and dedication, fighting for what we all believe in to make this city a much better place than when we found it. So, congratulations to you. Congratulations to you. And thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too join the choir of my colleagues with their accolades for Marlene. I just want to make a couple corrections, a couple things somebody said, one of my colleagues said, and I don't mean anything negative towards him. He said you had an off day and you helped him with something. I've known you for 13 years. I don't think you had an off day. So, every day is a Monday to you. We all appreciate you for that. I know you know you have an awesome staff. You're leading this department now. I know you'll continue to do good work. And Mayor, I'm always a believer of whoever the mayor wants to support that, but every once in a while, we got an awesome person like Marlene who came up through the ranks that's well deserved, well versed. And we're just, I'm just filled with joy that she's going to be leading this department. So, great appointment. You have my 100% support. Marlene, look forward to continue working with you. God bless you. God bless all of us. A greater for us than it is for her, that's for sure. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Jeanette Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Black girl magic. That is what we call her in 20. It is just, this is a day that we all could be proud of because this is a woman who doesn't pick sides and she comes with the truth. I had a conversation with her about her, that the weapons may form, but never against her. We know she was the fall guy for the Hillco mess. We know she was, and we know she didn't play a role in that. And so I want to publicly say thank you for standing strong. Thank you for not leaving because anybody else would have walked away. I'm glad you stayed. The people in 20 are blessed to have you. The citizens of Chicago are blessed to have you. I thank you, Mr. President, for this important.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in too in support of this appointment and I just mirror everything that all of my colleagues have said. You know, thank you for always responding, even when you're on vacation. Thank you for always being available, having your great leadership. You come from great stock. Thank you, Mom and family. You know, with strong support, that's how you, you know, you rear a woman like this through strong, through strong family support. And we thank you. And I look forward to continue to work with you. And it's just so amazing to have some, just one person who navigates through all these 50 wards and know them like the back of your hand, better than we do. Know what property is here, know what's there. You don't even have to tell you. Before we can even say it, you've already been on it. And so, I appreciate your hard work and dedication and I look forward to having you around. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this appointment. Mr. President, I think you could attest when you were in your service as Commissioner in the First District, where we, in our respective districts and ward, experienced a multi-unit explosion. And Marlene came to the scene and was nothing less than professional. Not only was she professional, and this is what I appreciate so much about you, Marlene, you're very compassionate. And as some of my colleagues have stated, so it's not just those big incidents like that, but even some of the smaller ones that stand out to me in particular, the way you came to my ward to assist a business that had been shut down. And how you helped and gave her instructions on how to reopen by fixing the building codes that she was in violation of. And so, it's those small things and compassion about people, their business, because you understood that the more and the longer her business stayed closed, that there was no money coming in for that particular family. And so you worked with them. And that is true compassion. So, thank you. And, Mr. President, this is a great appointment and congratulations, Marlene.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, Mama, I see you over there smiling. You have so much to be proud of. And without saying, you are so beautiful. First of all, let me start by saying, Marlene, you know Reverend Evans used to say, keep a good name because your name will get somewhere before you do. And throughout the years, you've kept a good name. I know that young man, and I have to take my hat off to him, that's standing behind you, our COO, John Roberson, some years ago had a doggone good eye. His intelligence, and we were at aviation back in 98, but then him looking and knowing what a jewel you were to bring, and you are, to bring you over to the Chicago Housing Authority. And as we focused on the many endeavors of having to work on the plan for transformation and work with our residents, you didn't have a big title, but your voice carried a lot of weight throughout that Housing Authority and helped every development manager, every officer, do what we needed to do to try to do our best to do right by our constituency. Now, as he elevated, guess who he kept taking with him? Marlene, huh? Why you taking Mar-? We need Marlene. No, I need Marlene. Going from there, going to the Sewer Department, going to permits, all of that, because he knew he needed a superstar to take with him. And that, you did. You performed in every area, over and above. But you didn't stop there, Marlene. You could have been happy with the dollars you was making and all of that, but there was a scripture in the Bible that says, "Study to show thyself approved." You went back to school, you excelled in your craft, not only in experience, but in academics as well. But this is what touches my heart the most, and this is what I love about this appointment, Mr. President, the most. You are Chicago. You are Chicago. You love this city. But not only that, because when we see people, as I think Alderman Spazado spoke upon, coming through, there's nothing like people who has started out just serving in smaller capacities, get elevated. Get elevated. And that's what does my heart good. So, Mr. President, I wholeheartedly stand in support of this appointment. And I have no doubt, no doubt, that's going to be a unanimous vote on this appointment. Thank you so much and I wish you well. Love you to life.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Chico.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this. The 10th Ward thanks you. I have called on you several times in the last few months, some with situations I didn't know how we're going to get out of, but you assured me we were and we did. So, on behalf of the 10th Ward, thank you. Thank you for making me look good and helping my residents. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman. There are no other Alders that wish to speak besides the Chair, okay? The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett. And then Alderman Lawson is standing because he's next, apparently. Alderman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize, I thought you saw my hand earlier. But I would be remiss if I did not say anything about Marlene. I've been knowing Marlene for a long time. I've seen Marlene sit in the background and help many, many commissioners to shine. She never goes out and gets to shine. And just like everyone said, and I concur with what they said, you know, Marlene is everywhere, you know? And I'm a little jealous because I thought I was the only one that she helped like that, but it appears she treating all of us the same. But anyway, Marlene is everywhere, you know, and she goes from the biggest job to the smallest job. And one of the things that we said at the committee, that I said at the committee, you know, Marlene don't have to be here. And I just want to thank you, Marlene, and commend the Mayor for choosing you, but thank you for continuing to give your civic duty to the city of Chicago. Because I know you can leave if you wanted to, but we appreciate you staying. The city needs you. Dealing with the cut-the-tape that's being proposed, you are the one who can implement all of those ideas in your department and we need you to help implement it. But also, not only dealing with building challenges, you are the one who can help us bring cranes, more cranes, back to the city of Chicago. So, I look forward to the future of the next three years of working with you. I commend you. Your family should be very proud of you. And we want to thank you all because I know I called Marlene, I don't know how she had time for family. Because I know I called Marlene late at night, my staff be calling her, you know, whenever building challenges come up, I don't know why, but everybody say, call Marlene, right? So, I know we have taken her from you all, so we want to thank you all for sharing Marlene with us. Congratulations to you, Marlene.
Thank you, Alderman. Before we pass it back to the Vice Chair for the last words here, the Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've done a lot of thinking and soul-searching on this appointment since it was announced several weeks ago. You know, Marlene Hopkins has been a constant presence in my ward. She helped keep an undocumented family in their home by meeting them in person and explaining how to vacate demolition order. She took the time and patience necessary to explain city government to a desperate family in need. Marlene most recently helped my office shut down a bar in a matter of days. A bar that had been the origin and location for multiple acts of violence, including the shooting of seven people four blocks from my home. Marlene responded immediately to my request for investigation of this business and with the work of her investigators, found multiple violations that led to this bar being shut down, led to community safety, and led to a tear in our community leaving. I and my community also remember vividly the systematic failures of city government that led to the grossly failed implosion of a smokestack in my community. Again, only blocks from my home. And Chief, we got to release that report, Chief. Marlene met with community members and environmentalists in a little village and with my colleagues to explain her role. She owned up to the role. She stepped forward to explain how she would have done things differently, being more accountable. And by stepping up, she played a role in changing this system that failed my community. This is a sign of a public official who is willing to listen, take responsibility to restore justice, and make the necessary changes in government to achieve better outcomes for our residents. And for those reasons, Mr. President, I will be a yes on this appointment today. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Vice Chair Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to invite Alderman Curtis and Commissioner to Wrigley Field, and we will explain what batting 1,000 means. Mayor, you're welcome as well. I actually spent a lot of time with Marlene at Wrigley Field, whether that was the World Series or saving that landmark. They're actually doing the roof where they're taking the original wood roof off of Wrigley Field and replacing it bit by bit. So, the work continues, actually. It looks done. It's never done. And you know that. The work is never done. And I joked yesterday that I have spent more time, only as of this moment, in this building maybe with you, than in the field and in my ward. And that really says something about you and your commitment. I said, we can meet here, we can Zoom. Nope, you're coming to my ward. And I know that you were going to be a Commissioner in that vein as well and serve the entire city and service in the neighborhoods where we are. I really appreciate that you're open and willing to look at the code. As I said yesterday, understanding owner-occupied buildings are different than totally commercial or investment property, and we need to lean into that. So, I appreciate your stance there. Also, as a city lifer myself, I appreciate your commitment and work to lift up mine and every neighborhood in the city. So, best of luck to you and congratulations and congrats on this appointment. Therefore, I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee report, an associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
All right. Here are no objections. Sure. The Chair recognizes Alderman Bill.
Mr. President, as I've done in the past, whenever we have an exceptional appointment, I ask for a roll call vote for the purposes of seeing nothing but green on the screen.
Okay. All right. A roll call vote has been requested. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
All right, the voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please log into your device. The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Alderman, I love how you said, see the green. See, you're embracing e-voting. If you have not voted, Alderman Laspata, not present. Alderman Hopkins, not present. Alderwoman Dow, not present. Alderman Robinson.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you.
Alderman Robinson is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor.
Absolutely, yes.
Taylor is a yes. Alderman Mosley, not in chambers. Alderman Mosley, not in chambers. Alderman Secho Lopez.
Absolutely yes.
Alderman Irvin. Alderman Irvin is a yes. Alderman Wagaspak, not present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, not present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa, not present. Alderman Viegas. Alderman Viegas is a yes. All those that voted who wish, it is now closed. Voting is now closed.[631.32][631.32](Applause).
There are 42 yays, no nays. This motion carries. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor signify as saying aye. All those opposed say no. This motion fails. Congratulations.[676.43][676.43](Laughter).
(Applause). (Laughter). 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 (Applause). Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moving on, document number O-2024-0008401, an amendment of the Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen dash twelve, by adding new section seventeen dash twelve dash eleven oh five, that establishes boundaries and regulations for signs within the Wrigley Field Adjacent Special Sign District located in the forty-fourth Ward. I move passage by this item by the same motion if there is no objection. Hearing no objections, so ordered. There is one historic landmark designation, document number O-2024-0008226 for Apollo's Two Thousand located at twenty-eight seventy-five West Sirmac Road in the twenty-fourth Ward. I don't believe anyone wishes to speak, so I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection. Hearing none, so ordered. Both summaries contain various map amendments in the third, sixth, ninth, eleventh, tenth, sixteenth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, thirty-second, thirty-ninth, fortieth, and fiftieth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection. Hearing none, so ordered. Both summaries contain various large signs over one hundred square feet in area, twenty-four feet above grade, in the first, second, fifth, twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, twenty-ninth, thirty-third, thirty-fifth, forty-first, forty-fourth, forty-fifth, forty-seventh, and forty-eighth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection. Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report. Thank you very much. That completes all of our committee reports. Thank you all for your diligence and patience. Okay, on matters of the agreed-upon calendar, Chair recognizes Chairwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I received from City Clerk Andrea M. Valencia a total of one hundred and nineteen items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and tribulatory resolutions from the following alderperson. Alderperson Dow. Alderperson Robinson. Alderperson Hall. Alderperson Harris. Alderperson Chico. Alderperson Lopez. Alderperson Coleman. Alderperson Rodriguez. Alderperson Talaferro. Alderperson Viegas. Alderperson Mits. Alderperson Spazado. Alderperson Knutson. Alderperson Gardner. Alderperson Manah Hoppinworth. And I move these in the omnibus, Mr. President.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. For new business, Clerk will call the wards beginning with the fiftieth ward.
Zoning amendments which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. An exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities which are referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Haddad and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter two dash thirty-one, by inserting a new section two dash thirty-one dash zero forty-five establishing Chicago Shoreline Advisory Board to develop and update shoreline management plan, which is referred to Committee on Environmental Protection. Alderman Manaha Hoppinworth has proposed ordinance for honorary street designation as William Friedkin Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Martin has proposed ordinance for an opening of the public way on West Leland Avenue between Northwestern Avenue and North Lincoln Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Martin also has proposed ordinance for amendment of an honorary street designation as Ozzy Goff Way to Ozzy Baldwin Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Martin and others have proposed resolution for expression of support on the passage of the Community Safety through Stable Homes Act by the Illinois Legislature, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Knutson has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section eight dash four dash one seventy-four, one forty-seven prohibiting unattended substances or weapons on public way or on private property, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter two dash eight, by adding a new Article five entitled Chicago, entitled City Council Review of Departmental Rulemaking, requiring transparent, clear, and accessible rulemaking by city departments, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Riley also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section seventeen dash four dash zero four zero four, modifying limitation on minimum lot area reductions to include buildings in lawful existence for twenty years in districts with a dash sixteen designation and granted no previous floor area bonuses, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Napolitano and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter four dash seventeen, by modifying procedures to designate restricted residential zones and allowing residents in zones to petition for repeal of designation, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Vasquez has proposed resolution to call for hearings to explore and address implications of climate change-induced migration to Chicago, which is referred to Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderman Spazado has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as P.O. Thor O. Soderberg CPD Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Mits has proposed ordinance for vacation of portion of North Harding Avenue between Lake Street and Kinsey Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Viegas has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Chicago Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Viegas has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter two dash sixty-eight, by adding a new Article two establishing guidelines and procedures for implementation of artificial intelligence programs and solutions to enhance city operations, which is referred to Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Alderman Viegas also has proposed ordinance for requirements for city departments and agencies to include classification for Middle Eastern or North African on data reports using racial or ethnic classifications, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Viegas and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter two dash sixty-eight, by adding a new Article two entitled Artificial Intelligence Programs Establishing Guidelines and Procedures for Effective Implementation of AI by City Departments and the Office of the City Clerk, which is referred to Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Alderman Ramirez Rosa has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section nine dash sixty-four dash one seventy, by allowing parking of pickup trucks or vans less than eight thousand pounds on portion of North Elston Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Traffic and Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Wagaspak has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Wagaspak also has proposed ordinance for honorary street designation as Honorary Carleen J. Flood Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Wagaspak and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Title two, by modifying Chapters two dash thirty-six and two dash eighty-four, and by striking residency requirements for continued salary payments to relatives of police and fire department officers killed in the line of duty, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Irvin has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Irvin also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section two dash ninety-two dash zero fifteen, by removing term limits for chief procurement officer, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Irvin also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section two dash fifty-three dash zero twenty, by modifying term limits and causes of removal for the Director of the City Council Office of Financial Analysis, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Irvin also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter two dash ninety-two, by adding a new section two dash ninety-two dash three seventy-one establishing minimum requirement for contract bidders doing business with the city of Chicago, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Irvin also has proposed resolution to call for hearings on laws and policies prohibiting violence interrupters from working within schools based on convictions of nonviolent offenses, which is referred to Committee on Education and Child Development. Alderman Burnett has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burnett also has proposed orders for vacation and dedication of public alleys in the area bounded by West Chicago Avenue, North Central Park Avenue, West Huron Street, and North Monticello Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Tabarez has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at thirty-nine forty-four West Fifty-Fifth Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Tabarez also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash two forty-four dash one forty prohibiting peddling in the twenty-third ward, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman O'Shea has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Winnie Ryan Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Coleman and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on missing women in the city of Chicago, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Quinn has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Chico has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow, to disallow additional package goods licenses on portion of South Commercial Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Harris has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of South Stony Allen Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Harris also has proposed order for amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to disallow additional package goods licenses on portion of South Stony Allen Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Harris also has proposed order for amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to disallow additional package good, package goods licenses on portion of East Seventy-Ninth Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Mitchell has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Titles five and thirteen, by adding new Sections five dash twelve dash zero seventy-one, and by replacing in its entirety Section thirteen dash seventy-two dash one oh five, requiring landlords or condominium governing associations to maintain safety and security on prospective premises, which is referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alderman Robinson has proposed ordinance for amendment of vacation of the area bounded by East Twenty-Sixth Street, South Lake Park Avenue, East Thirty-First Street, and South Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive to authorize release of utility easements benefiting Commonwealth Edison and Illinois Bell, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Robinson and others have proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter seven dash twenty-eight, by deleting and replacing Section seven dash twenty-eight dash six sixty, establishing rodent abatement czar and to coordinate city department efforts related to rat abatement, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Robinson has proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code, Section nine dash sixty-eight dash zero thirty-two, to include portion of East Thirty-First Place, South Vernon Avenue, and East Thirty-Second Place in seasonal permit parking program, which is referred to Committee on Traffic and Pedestrian Safety. Alderman Robinson also has proposed ordinance for lease of property at forty-seven twenty-seven through forty-seven fifty-nine South Cottage Grove Avenue to use as contractor parking for Northwestern Memorial Healthcare, which is referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alderman Laspada has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-five, by restricting additional late-hour liquor licenses within the first ward, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Lopez and others have proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter two dash one fifty-six regarding definition of lobbyists and further regulating restricted activities by lobbyists, which is referred to Committee on Ethics and Governmental Oversight. Alderman Lopez and others also have opposed, opposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapters, Chapters three dash fifty and three dash seventy-four establishing tax on automated kiosk devices installed in retail stores, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of Aldermanic introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Approval of the journals, Alderman Mitchell, for the approval.
I'm not aware of any corrections to the journals from the March twenty twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting or the April first twenty-twenty-four special meeting and move that it be approved.
All right. We're hearing no objections, so ordered. For unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I am not aware of any unfinished business.
Very well. Miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell.
I'm aware of three pieces of miscellaneous business. For, for the first piece of miscellaneous business, Alderman Beal has asked to make a motion to discharge the Committee on Housing and Real Estate from further consideration of ordinance O-two zero two-three zero 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 five eight five zero and ask that the same ordinance be considered today by City Council.
Very well. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is an application that was submitted back in February of twenty-twenty-three that went through the shy blocks builder program, and it has vetted the CDC and Plan Commission with unanimous votes. And so I introduced an ordinance back in November of last year to get this heard. And I know we had some hiccups with not having enough members at the Plan Commission meeting. And so, you know, under our rules and regulations, you know, this body has the right to introduce an ordinance to pass this ordinance as we see fit. So I motioned up the Rule forty-one, and so I asked for the most favorable roll call on the Committee on Finance with the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
All right. So we have a motion for a discharge on the floor first. Is that correct? That's correct. Yeah, it's a two-step process. All right. So the motion is for the discharge for the first favorable vote. If there are no objections to that, seeing none, so ordered. All right. Now, now there's a motion on the floor, the second motion. Go ahead, make your motion.
Second motion is also to pass the ordinance by the same most favorable roll call vote on the Committee of Finance and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
If there are no objections to that, that's not out of order. If there are no objections, so ordered. Thank you. All right. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
All right. So Alderman Riley, Alderman Riley also filed two notices pursuant to Rule forty-one, but it's my understanding that he does not wish to proceed with those items at this time.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Alderman Mitchell was about to say, Alderman Beal and I have come to an agreement on the Office of Legislative Council ordinances. And it's true, we did put in Rule forty-one motions for the substantive resolution, which actually creates the office which is housed within Chairwoman Harris's committee, and also the appropriations and budget ordinance that is housed within Chairman Irvin's committee. And after speaking with both chairs, and having been promised committee proceedings to consider both of those ordinances after today, Alderman Beal and I will be withdrawing our Rule forty-one motion. And again, we're very happy to report we've come to an agreement on this. This is something members of this body have been working on before this administration. I think it's going to be a very powerful and useful tool for the City Council. I look forward to making a small adjustment that Chairwoman Harris would like to see done, and to bring some of our newer colleagues up to speed on where this ordinance came from and where it's gotten to. But I do think because it ironically is all about transparency and good government, it made no sense to try and ram that through here today with a Rule forty-one, rather to air it out in the light of day in front of the public in proper committee hearings. So I'm grateful to Chairwoman Harris and to Chairman Irvin for promising to make that happen, and therefore withdraw those motions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Mitchell, are there any other miscellaneous items?
Well, except for the ordinance set in the date and time of the next meeting, I am not aware of any further miscellaneous business.
Very well. Well, then let's go to the date and time of the next meeting.
All right. I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk set in the date and time of the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, please read that ordinance, ordinance.
Beat ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago. Section one, the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago should be held on Friday, April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, beginning at twelve forty-five PM in the City Council Chamber on the second floor in City Hall, one twenty-one North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Very well. Alderman Mitchell.
I move passage to the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. For the omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. This meeting is adjourned.